Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we, the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen.
Amen.
Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, song, dance, lore and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? No apologies. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,726th meeting held on Tuesday the 7th of November 2023 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that the minutes of the 4,726th meeting of council, held on the 7th of November 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any standing committee? Councillor Adamant.
Yeah, thank you Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Over the weekend, you released our plan to help protect residents against the escalating costs of the state government's bin tax. With residents feeling the bite of cost of living, can you please update the chamber on your zero waste strategy, towards zero waste strategy, including how residents can benefit financially?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Adamant for the question. Well, we know that there is not a tax that this Labor state government doesn't love, and if they don't love new taxes, then they love putting up the rate of taxes, and that is exactly what is happening with the state government's bin tax, the landfill levy. When it was first introduced, Brisbane residents and Queensland residents were promised there will be no impact on households of the state government's bin tax. Well, clearly that was rubbish. The reality is, from, starting from this year onwards, every single year, the bin tax will be increased by the state government, and the subsidy that is paid to councils to help offset that will be reduced, year in, year out, from now on. And so you will see an ever-increasing gap, which puts extra pressure on the residents of Brisbane. That gap will amount to $300 million over time. And so any suggestion that somehow there's no impact on households is just plain false. But having said that, we're gearing up to make sure that Brisbane residents pay less. We're gearing up to make sure we can do everything reasonable and practical to help residents divert their waste from landfill into other recycling initiatives. And that's exactly what our waste strategy is all about. It's about making sure there are more options and more services so that people can reduce their waste that is going in the red top bin and going to landfill. One of the first things we're doing is we're expanding our food waste pilot recycling programme from 6,000 households to 12,000 households. So we're doubling the size of that initial food waste recycling programme through the green waste bins in 6,000 homes, and that will be expanded to 12,000 homes. We've also committed to the staged rollout of organics and food waste recycling over the coming years. As I've said before, we'll do that in a sensible and measured way, and we'll do that without reducing the red top bin collection service.
Right.
And that is the important difference, because there are a lot of people, a lot of councils in other places that have rushed into food and organics recycling, and they've done it by cutting the weekly red top bin service. That's, that's the, the, the quick and easy way to do it, but it is the most impactful way for residents. It is the most impactful because it means that their red top bin is festering away for a fortnight, and I can tell you, in, it's not popular in places like Melbourne, it's not popular in Sydney, but can you imagine in subtropical, tropical Brisbane to have those red top bins festering for a fortnight? We've heard of reports in other council areas of people storing dirty nappies in the freezer because they can't put it in the bin for the fortnightly waste, waste collection. So we're not doing that, we're keeping it weekly, weekly red top bin, and gearing up our green waste collection. Obviously, we've reduced the cost of the green waste recycling service down to just a dollar a week, we've halved, we've more than halved that cost. We're investigating more locations for advanced community composting hubs, similar to the one in New Farm, councillor Howard, that is so well-used and so popular. We're investigating 50 convenient, community-based recycling hubs for items such as batteries, CDs, glasses, tablet blister packs, and various other items that can't necessarily go in the yellow top bin, but also should be and can be recycled. And so we're trying to provide more locations that people can recycle those items that can't go in the yellow top bin. We'll be installing 1,500 new recycling bins in our parks and public spaces as well, gearing up the opportunities so that there's more opportunities for people when they're out and about in public spaces to recycle. We will be taking advantage of the opportunity to roll out container exchange locations, or container exchange bins, which will create a new revenue source for the Lord Mayor's charitable trust. And so every 10 cent coin that is collected on a container put in one of those bins goes to help the needy through the Lord Mayor's charitable trust, and I'm excited about that programme as well. We'll be digitising waste vouchers, we'll be working with industry to establish a household soft plastics recycling trial, we're investing incentives for anaerobic digestion and other technologies in apartment buildings, and we're also incentivising composting and worm farms, which is obviously a really sustainable way to deal with organic waste on-site, doesn't involve any transport costs, doesn't involve any large costs on the ratepayers. The people that deal with their organic waste through composting on-site, they are heroes, we want to support them, and we'll be increasing the rebate from $70 to $100.
Your time has expired, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, when you were preparing your budget, you would have taken into account Brisbane's inflation rate. In the March quarter this year, the annualised figure was 7.4%, in the June quarter it was 6.3%, and in the September quarter it was 5.2%. This was just before you blamed inflation for your $400 million budget blowout. Given you've actually still not told the truth about what caused your massive budget blowout, just 12 weeks into the new financial year, will you come clean today? What caused the blowout?
Lord Mayor. Councillor Murphy? Lord Mayor.
Well, Mr Chair, it is fascinating that there's only one person in the city of Brisbane who doesn't seem to understand that everyone and everything is under cost pressures at the moment. There's only one person, and that is councillor Cassidy. Up the road, up the road at the state government, they understand it.
Just one moment, Lord Mayor, just one moment. Councillor Cassidy, you have asked the Lord Mayor a question, and you do not give him the respect of listening to that question in silence. We are going to again listen to responses in question time in silence. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Up the road in George Street, the Labor state government understands it. They have had cost increases since the budget of over $4 billion. The entire council budget is only $4 billion. Their cost increases alone equal the entire council budget, yet councillor Cassidy, like an ostrich, has his head in the sand, doesn't understand what's going on here. In Canberra, they are facing massive cost blowouts, massive cost blowouts in Canberra. But really what it comes down to, I would suggest councillor Cassidy brushes up on what the federal government, the Reserve Bank, and even international agencies are saying to Australia. And that is, the inflation in Australia has continued longer and more persistently than it was anticipated. Dr Chalmers knows that.
Councillor Cassidy?
Well, he's asking-
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, do not disregard my previous instruction, we are going to listen to responses in silence. Lord Mayor.
He's asking how we missed higher-than-predicted inflation. It's higher than predicted for longer. Do you research councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair? So Dr Chalmers didn't get it, and in fact his predictions were off, the state predictions were off. And when we put the budget together, as we do every year, we go off the March quarter figures. And the March quarter figures, which were based on federal and state data, federal and state data predicted that inflation would come down much quicker than it actually has. And in fact, we've seen, and we're not just talking about things like groceries here, which inflation is measured by, our costs, like construction costs, and a whole range of other costs that we have, have gone up massively higher than inflation. Massively higher than inflation. But councillor Cassidy is unwilling to have a look at the facts, is unwilling to understand the facts, and just wants to keep trying to make a political point. Everyone else can see what pressures governments are under, everyone else can see what pressures businesses are under, everyone else can see what pressures households are under, yet we see a Labor opposition-
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Cassidy?
Yeah, just on relevance, the question was actually asking the Lord Mayor to detail what caused the blowout. He's talked a lot about state government, federal government, IMF, lots of other bodies, but we're specifically asking about the council budget here. He hasn't answered that question, what caused the $400 million blowout?
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor, to the, to the relevance of the question, please.
Councillor Cassidy, Mr Chair, continues to deliberately misunderstand what is going on here. And whether it's a deliberate misunderstanding of the increasing costs that governments are under, which we've repeated time and time again, or a deliberate misunderstanding of the fact that the $400 million 10% target that we have set is the end-of-financial-year figure. It's not today, it's the end-of-financial-year figure. And so we made it very clear that we need to make adjustments now, so that by the end of the financial year, we will be in the right position to help keep rates low while also delivering record infrastructure spend, which is exactly what we're doing. We have consistently kept rates low, year in, year out, and we've consistently delivered record infrastructure spend. And councillor Cassidy wouldn't be aware that when you build something, the cost is going up. But that's the reality, for anyone that's building something. And, and I could tell you, the, the way that we would protect ourselves from inflationary pressures is to not build anything. But that's not something we would ever do. Building is in our DNA, delivering infrastructure is in our DNA, dealing with traffic congestion is in our DNA, supporting the construction of new housing is in our-
Just give me one moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and in accordance with section 21.4 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby request you refrain from calling out across the chamber. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
And because we are building more than ever before, because we are building more than ever before, we face significant pressures when it comes to the increasing costs of construction. And so if you have a look at the, the record of infrastructure and capital works investment in our city, this three-year period we are in right now is the biggest three-year period ever in the history of the city and the suburbs. It's the biggest, and 80, 80-plus percent of it all is being invested in the suburbs.
Just one moment. Councillor Cassidy, as you have failed to comply with the request to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, I hereby warn you in accordance with section 21.6 of Meetings Local Law 2001, that failing to comply with my request may result in an order being issued. Councillor Collier, I will also caution you as well for calling out. Lord Mayor, you've got the call. Oh, sorry, actually you don't, you've run out of time. Sorry. Further questions? Councillor Johnson?
No.
Oh, sorry, my apologies. Councillor Atwood?
Thank you, thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, in the middle of a housing crisis and cost of living crisis, the Greens ca-, sorry, the Greens, Labor, a coalition of chaos, announced three new taxes in three weeks. Instead of penalising those that build homes for a living, can you please update the chamber on what the Shrima Council is doing to create more homes in Brisbane?
Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I'd like to thank councillor Atwood for the question. Mr Chair, councillor Atwood is absolutely correct. The Green, Labor, Coalition of Chaos have announced three new taxes in three weeks. Three new taxes that will further cripple the building and construction industry. But there might be trouble in paradise, maybe a little bit more chaos than coalition happening in the ranks. Last week, the Labor Lord Merrill candidate released the press statement entitled, Brisbane Renters Cannot Afford the Greens. Apart from criticising their own coalition, the press statement was a poor attempt to showcase Labor's plan-
Councillor Massey, just, just one moment, councillor, councillor Massey, you may not have been here for the warning when you ducked out earlier, but we are not calling out across the chamber. Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Apart from criticising their own coalition, the press statement was a poor attempt to showcase Labor's plan to address the housing crisis. In the statement, Labor announced they will develop a comprehensive housing strategy. This concept of Labor developing a comprehensive strategy is not new, as we have heard councillor Cassidy spruik this idea for months, but we are yet to see any new policies to address housing within the city. Mr Chair, what was also interesting in the Labor press release was this renewed focus on density in well-located areas. Labor defines well-located as close to public transport, close to centres of employment, and close to parks and shopping centres. This sounds very familiar, probably too familiar. Despite my criticism councillor Cassidy for not reading our housing strategy, some might now suggest he has read it and even plagiarised it. One of the core pillars of our housing strategy is the concept of the right housing in the right location. And Mr Chair, I quote directly from our housing strategy, new housing for our community should be focused in the most appropriate locations for access to transport, services, recreation and employment opportunities. It continues, integration of housing with existing and planned transport and infrastructure will maximise community access. Homes located, accessible to jobs, social and community services and transport can make living easier and more enjoyable for residents, as well as reduce living costs. Mr Chair, they say imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. Unfortunately, the rest of the press release sets a scene of destruction if a Green Labor Coalition of Chaos were elected. Labor state, they will work with developers, yet they currently refuse to meet with them and are proposing a land banking tax. They have vilified them for years, but they have suddenly realised that they provide 96% of the housing in Brisbane. It's unbelievable, you can't make this stuff up. Labor state, they will maintain the character of suburban Brisbane, yet they propose medium density in suburban residential areas. Mr Chair, whilst the Green Labor Coalition of Chaos will find ways to further hinder the building and construction industry, this side of the chamber will get on with the job of facilitating more supply and encouraging more homes to be built. This includes our housing supply incentive, which will incentivise approved development applications to commence construction by reducing infrastructure charges. This includes our suburban renewal programme and implementing the Carrilpa Sustainable Growth Precinct. This includes our build-to-rent incentive, citywide review of major centres, short-stay accommodation task force and design-led city initiatives. All actions that focus on facilitating sustainable housing opportunities and supply. Mr Chair, two weeks ago, I updated the chamber that in September alone, we approved over 1,000 new homes. Our development services team continues to facilitate high-quality, sustainable development outcomes and latent supply. At the end of October, the team had decided over 3,000 development applications, with a further 142 applications of a residential nature under assessment. 142 applications with the potential to provide an additional 9,000 dwellings. As is the Labor way, they are proposing to undertake audits, audits on this, on the development approvals and audits on land zoning. Instead, Mr Chair, we are about action. We have a strong track record when it comes to ensuring Brisbane has an adequate and diverse housing supply, while also ensuring growth occurs in a sustainable way and our city's future character is preserved. And we will continue to focus on delivering these outcomes for the residents of Brisbane. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Allen, your time has expired. Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, approximately four years ago, Dr Jeff Copeland was killed walking home to his house on Venna Road in Annalee. As part of council's response to the coroner, we committed to resurfacing Venna Road, which is the bare minimum that council could do. Last year, you allocated $200,000 plus for planning, and this year, almost $1 million to resurface Venna Road. Will you reconfirm today that you will fully resurface Venna Road to give the Copeland family some solace that this road is, road safety issues are being addressed, and confirm that council will meet its commitment to the coroner to fully resurface Venna Road, Annalee?
Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I can confirm that we will absolutely meet our commitments, we will meet our commitments to the coroner, we will meet our commitments to the community. Obviously, we're working through timing issues, and we'll be able to confirm that in the near future. But funding, as has been pointed out, funding was allocated last year to plan and gear up for this project, and we've allocated further funding this year, and we will be meeting our commitments. Now, obviously, this situation was a tragedy, but from my recollection, what occurred in this tragedy was that someone who was really, really unsafe to be behind the wheel, someone who I understand was under the influence of a substance, caused this accident. It was not caused by a road surface. And so we've just got to be clear on what caused this accident. Someone who was driving under the influence of substances caused this accident, the road did not cause this accident. But having said that, we will meet our commitments.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Huang?
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, today's Courier-Meoy outlined that the federal government's 90-day review is likely to reduce the number of infrastructure projects being funded. Given Labor councillors' comments over the past few months, do you think they will be supporting their federal Labor colleagues or their state ones?
Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Can I thank councillor Huang for his question, and the answer is quite clearly, we shall see. We know that the Labor Party is in favour of cutting basic services, as we know they've advised that they'll be halving the general waste collection if they were successful next year. We've, we know that they love taxes, we know they've announced a whole, as we heard from councillor Allen, a whole new raft of taxes on housing coming if they are successful next year. And now we've seen that the Labor federal government is committed to cutting road projects, particularly in Queensland. We have seen a number of Labor state ministers come out and push back against that, but there is no denying the front-page story today in today's Courier-Meoy, the PM's Great Roads squib, where this article speaks to the Albanese government pulling out of longstanding conventions regarding road funding and will shift the cost burden back to the states. So they are, they are all, so that's the Labor Party announcing another series of cuts to projects that will reduce traffic congestion. I assume this will affect both public and private transport projects. We have tried to be an excellent partner, excuse me, we have tried to be an excellent partner with the federal government across the board. We have worked with them on the Beams Road project, where we are still yet to have formal confirmation that they are going to hold up their obligation. Stories like this, where, where the Labor Party has indicated a cut to road projects, puts me under, it puts me under a great stress about how the federal Labor government thinks these roads will be delivered. We know that, we are, we are hoping to partner with the federal government on the Lindem Rail Crossing Mark II project, which we know that is important for the outer eastern suburbs, in particular Doughboy and Winna Manly Ward. We, we knew, we knew the, that, excuse me, we knew the federal government was keen to get out of their obligations. We knew they wanted out of these funding arrangements, and they are backing out of road projects like, like there's no tomorrow, because deep in their heart, the Labor Party loves cutting road projects, they love cutting projects, particularly in Queensland. I don't, I don't, I do not understand why the Labor Party hates Brisbane and why they hate Queensland, but clearly they do. Now, when we asked the Labor councillors in this place to back the people of Brisbane, when this council on the 16th of May 2023, by resolution, passed this, that we highlight, that the council highlights its concerns about almost $500 million in road funding that has recently been cut or deferred in the federal budget, putting it with several projects within the city of Brisbane, the fastest-growing capital in the country. Council calls on the federal government to maintain its commitment to funding critical Brisbane road projects, getting residents home sooner and safer-
Just, just, just one moment councillor Wines. Councillor Johnson, we're not going to call out across the chamber. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. The result of the vote on that resolution, ayes 17, noes 4. Now councillor Whitme, by luck, was not present that day. But all of her Labor colleagues voted no to calling on the federal government to maintain their position in supporting road projects, so presumably, they're completely fine with this, because that's how they voted on the 16th of May. When the chance was given to the Labor councillors to stand up against traffic harming, excuse me, stand up against traffic congestion, they squipped it. They squipped it, they voted with their Labor colleagues, councillor Huang, so presumably they are all in favour. Let's not forget that we have just hit day 198 of the 90-day review. All of those projects remain in limbo, this council remains committed to their delivery. And we want to see improvements to traffic flow, we want to see safety upgrades in particular, and we want to see the people of Brisbane better off than they were before these projects occurred. So can I ask the Labor councillors to reject their, their stated position of being, being in favour of those road cuts, and rather get on board, try to help the people of Brisbane? Can I call on councillor Whitme to, to get off the fence and get behind her own community? I know that she, I know that she is torn on this, I, I know that she is deeply loyal to the Labor Party, she puts the Labor Party first, well above her community, and I know that that's starting to bother people in the outer eastern suburbs. Please, get off the fence and get with your own community, maintain these projects.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Councillor Collier?
My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the residents of Brisbane deserve the truth, so let's try again. Can you today come clean and tell the people of Brisbane what has caused the $400 million black hole in your budget?
Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, the residents of Brisbane deserves an opposition that asks the question and then listens to the answer, week in, week out, and not continues to peddle rubbish, because that's what we've seen time and time again. We've been through this countless times. It is obvious at all levels of government what has caused these challenges, everyone is facing them, yet like ostriches, Labor have their heads buried in the sand and can't seem to see what everyone else can see, despite it being pointed out to them time and time again. The costs facing council are far higher than inflation. The costs, because we are constructing more than ever before, are far higher than inflation. The costs, because we are constructing more than ever before, are far higher than inflation. But even if you took inflation as a guide, inflation has persisted longer and is higher than the federal and state governments were projecting earlier this year. It is really very simple. Dr. Chalmers got it wrong. Cameron Dick got it wrong. It is a fact that we are all facing. Now, we know that up at George Street, they've had a programme of $3 billion worth of Labor cuts. They have the hive to make claims about their opponents, yet Cameron Dick has been cutting the budget up in George Street for years. He's been reducing various things like agency staff, consultants, contractors, things that the Labor opposition in this place rails against, yet they've been doing it up the road at George Street. And as far as I'm aware, this programme is still underway, because it was a multi-year programme that the Treasurer announced. And with all the pressures on their budget, coal rescued them temporarily.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Cassidy?
The question wasn't about coal royalties. This is irrelevant, it's my point of order. The question was whether the Lord Mayor can actually tell us what caused the $400 million blowout in his budget, not in the state budget or the federal budget, or what the IMF says in his budget.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I don't uphold your point of order, the Lord Mayor is answering the question.
It's exactly the same things that are causing challenges to everyone else's budgets. Not just our budget. Now, if this was a challenge that we faced alone, that'd be a different story. It is a challenge being faced by everyone. Every week, we're seeing construction companies fall over. Every week, we're hearing about how grim it is when it comes to the construction sector and construction costs. Every week, we are hearing about it. And if councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier are completely unaware of the situation that we are in, then I would be very, very alarmed that these people want to be in administration next year. I would be very, very alarmed that they would have the control of the purse strings of Brisbane, because we know what they would do. They would jack up rates, they would jack up rates, they would, they would give in to their Labor colleagues in the federal and state government and support the reduction in transport-related spending.
Lord Mayor, just one moment. Point of order, councillor Cassidy?
Unrelevant. So like, I assume the answer is the Lord Mayor doesn't know. He said that he just reads newspaper articles and then decides to cut $400 million. That's not what the people of Brisbane deserve, that answer. They actually want to know why he's had a $400 million blowout in his budget.
Councillor, councillor Cassidy, there's no debating of a point of order. The Lord, and I don't uphold your point of order, the Lord Mayor has answered this question, I think, twice, almost, in, in this question time. Lord Mayor, sorry, I can't tell you how much time you've got left.
Okay, it says 3:21 on my, on my counter. And so we know that they would jack up rates, because they've already announced a number of policies involving jacking up rates. That, that is the Labor approach. People pay more under Labor, whereas we've been trying to keep costs down and rates down. And less than inflation, in fact, half of inflation, less than half of inflation. I, I, I think-
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, as you continue to fail to comply with the request to take remedial action of your unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section 21.8 of the Meetings' Local Law 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and the reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
I think it's actually-
Be very careful, councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's the opposite of funny, that the people who would be the alternative administration of this city can't understand basic facts about the economic, social climate that we are in at the moment, which is putting pressure on everyone. According to their logic, there's nothing to see. There's no challenges, no one's facing any challenges. According to their logic, it's okay to see over $4 billion worth of blowouts since the budget at George Street, under the Labor government, yet there's apparently no issue here in council. And so, in a climate where construction costs have gone up month on month, and they continue to go up, in a climate where we're building more than ever before, we're building more infrastructure than ever before in the city's history, and even, I can tell you, even with a 10% sensible reduction in spending, we will be spending more than they ever did, even with 10% reductions.
Further questions? Councillor Johnson, I believe you stood up earlier? No, sorry, I meant to go over the other side. My apologies. Councillor Landers?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, last week, the Shriner Council announced some important grants for local community groups and organisations. Can you please update the chamber on the latest round of grants available to Brisbane residents, including how they are helping build a better Brisbane?
Councillor Howard?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Landers for her ongoing interest in council's community grants programmes. Council recognises the important work that Brisbane's not-for-profits and community groups do in helping to make the city more inclusive, more resilient, connected, and healthy. With this in mind, throughout the year, the Shriner Council delivers a range of useful and beneficial grant programmes that go a long way in supporting the community organisations doing great work across the city. One of the ways in which council is able to foster vibrant and healthy communities is through our Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants Programme, in particular, the community support category of this grant programme. The community support category provides much-needed funding to improve community facilities, respond to local needs, and build organisational capacity. Last week, council was proud to announce that more than 50 clubs, community groups, and not-for-profit organisations across Brisbane would share in over $400,000 as beneficiaries of the most recent round of the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants. The recipients in this grant round have committed these funds to everything, from servicing air conditioning units to upgrading safety equipment or developing strategic plans for future growth. While I don't have enough time to list off each of the successful recipients today, I thought it would be worthwhile to make mention of a few. In Durack, the Durack and Nala Bowls Club will be using their funds received to purchase a modern ride-on mower to better maintain their facility. In Chermside, the Brisbane Netball Association are set to install permanent shade shelters to provide a sun-safe viewing experience for their spectators. And in Nunda, Northside Connected Incorporated will be using their funds to develop a strategic plan to guide the organisation in its future ambitions. Again, these examples are just a snapshot of the more than 50 projects valued at over $400,000 that will go a long way to developing our city's community organisations. The community support category of the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants works hand-in-hand with the community facility category of this grant programme, which provides up to $200,000 in funding for significant projects that see our community facilities get even better. Since launching the programme in 2021, the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants has provided over 270 groups with a share of over $5.1 million in funding to make Brisbane suburbs even better. For those looking to access funding for their latest facility upgrade or project, the next round of grants for the community support category will open in late January 2024. I ask all of those here in the chamber to encourage their community organisations in their ward to apply to this grant programme so that they can be supported in doing the great work across the city. While the Lord Mayor's Better Suburbs Grants Programme has so far seen $5 million in funding delivered to community organisations since its inception, it is far from the only grant programme administered and delivered by council. Earlier this year, council was proud to announce three successful recipients of the Pathways Out of Homelessness Grant Programme, with over $1 million in funding being provided to allow these organisations to undertake works to assist persons at risk or experiencing homelessness. These groups were Brisbane Housing Company, who are utilising a specialist mobile health provider to deliver place-based health services to support residents in community housing with complex health needs. Youth Advocacy Centre, who are providing a wraparound advocacy support programme for at-risk young people aged 14 to 19 years to transition to permanent safe housing, and the Institute of Urban Indigenous Health, who are supporting vulnerable First Nations people and families through the delivery of care plans and early interventions designed to maintain their tenancies. Council also recognises that across Brisbane, many grants are available for community organisations for a variety of purposes, provided by sectors such as businesses and corporates, philanthropic organisations, and all levels of government. We have long known that the fragmentation of these grants can make it challenging for community groups to find, track, and apply for all of the grants and funding opportunities available to them. With this in mind, council set out to make the process of finding and applying for relevant grants as simple as possible for Brisbane's residents and community organisations through developing our Funding Finder web tool. This tool allows community groups the ability to keep track of and receive updates on potential funding opportunities available to them, with Funding Finder's database having over 1,100 grants worth over $55 billion currently available.
Councillor Howard, I'm sorry, your time has expired. Councillor Massey?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. Three years ago in 2020, the Queensland Government committed $10 million to furthering, to further developing bike-friendly streets in South Brisbane, and $22.5 million to improve the River Walk at Kangaroo Point. I understand Brisbane City Council and TMR have executed a funding agreement for delivery. However, in this letter to State MP Dr. Amy McMahon, Minister Bailey clearly states that they are waiting on your response to progress the delivery of these works. These are critical infrastructure deliveries, not only for South Brisbane and Kangaroo Point, cyclists, residents, recreational or otherwise, and pedestrians, but also for people across the city that enjoy this area. After three years of Brisbane City Council dragging its feet, can you today confirm you've met with Minister Bailey to progress these projects so critical to South Brisbane and Kangaroo Point?
Lord Mayor?
Thank you for the question, councillor Massey. I'm sure councillor Murphy would love to be able to meet with Minister Bailey, but unfortunately, he's waiting on a response. There has been a request made to meet with Minister Bailey. Obviously, Minister Bailey is left with the commitments made by Jackie Trad, that they would fund certain things, and is scrambling around now to-
Point of order?
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Massey?
Just to clarify, the letter says that they are waiting on the Lord Mayor, not-
Thank you, councillor Massey.
I think we've learned from history that-
Chambers, just one moment.
You can't believe anything Minister Bailey says.
Hang on, Lord Mayor, hang on. No, just wait. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
Yeah, thank you. Look, this is someone who's been caught out bending the truth, time in, time out. This is someone who was labelled by the CCC as foolish. So, really? Words from Minister Bailey are not worth the paper they are written on. But what we see here is that the state government, through Jackie Trad, committed to funds towards certain projects, and obviously, they're wanting us to deliver those projects for them. And so councillor Murphy is, has requested a meeting with Minister Bailey and hasn't heard back yet. So, obviously, you know, we will help the Labor state government deliver their commitments with their funding, as they should. But if you want more information, I suggest you get in touch with councillor Murphy about this, because he can actually tell you the facts of the situation.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Jenkinson?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Labor state government has recently announced that they will be constructing a new pedestrian bridge, Abogo Road, as part of their Cross River Rail works, whilst they still have no plans to repair the Normanby Pedestrian Bridge in Hurston. Can you update the chamber on why you think the state Labor government is happy to prioritise one side of the river over the other?
Councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and can I thank councillor Jenkinson for the question? She is, of course, an excellent advocate for the inner north and has been keenly interested in this project for some time. Now, to orientate those who don't know what's going on, as part of the Cross River Rail project, the state government has a number of pedestrian bridges that they are proposing. One of them is this one. What a beauty, hey? What a, what a wonderful bridge, a, a Bay Area Bridge-inspired suspension bridge. This is for the south side of the city. It links the PA to Bogo Road. And what a stunning bridge. Well done, kudos, kudos to them. It must be very close to the Minister for Transport's-
Just one moment, councillor Wines. Lord Mayor, we do not call out across the chamber. Councillor Wines?
It is very close, if not within the Minister for Transport's constituency itself. As you well know, the vast majority of, the vast majority of upgraded train stations as part of Cross River Rail, Yaronga, Yarongpili, Fairfield, also within the Minister for Transport's jurisdiction, his constituency, I should say. Now, what do we get on the north side? Well, we get, here we go, we get a stubby bridge, a stubby bridge that the state government has ripped out and then, then tried to chuck on our desk and say, well, you can fix that now. So here you go, so, south side, beautiful. North side, stubby and pointless thing. Why, why is there such a blatant south side bias among, among the state government? They had to be dragged kicking and screaming to even do a consultation on, on a north-side road tunnel. They, when it comes to building a bridge, they will build the Taj Mahal of bridges for the inner south and leave us with a stub on the north side. It is, it is quite frankly appalling. The, the rich irony is that they clearly have the money, or else they wouldn't build the south-side one. So it's clearly personal. But the Minister for Cross River Rail has, has, has clearly ensured that his part of the world is looked after, and that councillor Jenkinson, in my part of the world, is obviously neglected. I should also recognise councillor Howard. Those of us who care for the inner north are being, it's worse than ignored. It's been deliberately provoked. Why, why, you know, Minister Bailey routinely attacks this organisation for, well, actually, for anything and everything, it's just sort of one of his preferred pastimes, but, but he criticises us for our position on active transport, even though the Brisbane City Council spends more on active transport than the entire government of Queensland, across the whole state, right? So we, our expenditure on active transport exceeds theirs, but when it comes time to actually build something, they deliberately neglect the north side. And it is appalling. Quite frankly, I am calling for the minister to build an equivalent bridge on the north side. There have been a number of calls from the community to do so already. Councillor Jenkinson, I know, and I have had a number of conversations about how vital it is that we get the due recognition. So, once again, we see a Labor government cutting projects, we see a Labor government cutting funding, we see a Labor government cutting services and putting up taxes and then deliberately neglecting the north side of Brisbane. I, I do not understand the extent to which they are committed to it. I read within a news article from the ABC News, so it will, it will be, it will not be super favourable to this organisation, but it says that Kelvin Grove, to the, to the Grammar School bridge to be half dismantled as council and state clashes. Well, that is not a clash, the state ripped it out as part of their Cross River Rail proposal. They ripped it out, and they turned to us and said, well, now we've ripped it out, you fix it. That is exactly what happened. It is an interesting, it is an interesting framing that it's a clash. No, we believe the bridge should be there. We also believe that there should be improved active-
Councillor Collier, just one moment, oh, sorry councillor Massey, I thought you were standing up. Councillor Collier, do not call out across the chamber, especially cupping your hands to call out across the chamber. Thank you, apologies accepted. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Once a media defender of the state government, always a media defender of the state government. Councillor Collier could not miss an opportunity to fall into old habits and rush to the fence of what is an appalling, a nasty government that are bent on hurting north-siders in Brisbane, in particular.
Just one moment, councillor Wines, just one moment. Point of order, councillor Collier?
Will councillor Wines take a question?
I am taking a question right now. In fact, it's question time, and if councillor Collier wants to ask me a question, she can use the very next question when it becomes the opposition's turn. But this is what I'll say, this state government is failing on active transport, it's nasty- But this is what I'll say, this state government is failing on active transport, it's nasty and hurtful to the north side. The federal equivalent of that is, is cutting funding. When you have double Labor governments, you have double prices and you have half the stuff. Welcome to a double Labor government world.
councillor Wines, your time has expired and that ends question time.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Thank you. I move suspension standing orders to enable me to move a motion.
Seconded.
We have a suspension of standing orders moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Collier. councillor Cassidy, you have three minutes.
Thanks very much Chair. I call on the Lord Mayor to come clean about his $400 million in cuts. In question time today, the Lord Mayor refused to answer basic questions about what's caused the $400 million blowout in his budget, just 12 weeks after it was delivered. He won't say what's caused the blowout and now he's claiming that it was just a sort of vibe that he felt. He won't say what he's cutting, but we do know the cuts are happening. It's day 28, which means almost $45 million has been cut from suburban projects. So, we call today on the Lord Mayor and every LMP councillor in here to come clean.
Councillors, we have a procedural motion to suspend standing orders so that councillor Collier, sorry councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier can move a motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier. Ours to my right, nos to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. It's my pleasure. Just, just watch them because they do make you thirsty. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the nos have it, the voting being seven in favour and 19 against.
The procedural motion to suspend standing orders has been lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Oh, that's... councillor Johnson, would you like some pretzels?
No. I'd like no Mentos.
No. Noted, thank you. You just have to be careful because the pretzels do make you thirsty. Councillors, we move on to item four of the agenda, consideration of committee reports. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Just a procedural motion. I move that the motion currently lying on the table, the Brisbane City Council commits to buying all future buses from South East Queensland manufacturers, comes off the table.
Seconded.
Councillors, we have a motion to take, the motion that reads this city, this, that Brisbane City Council commits to buying all future buses from South East Queensland manufacturers, come off the table. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against say no. I do believe the ayes have it. Right. So, just to remind the chamber, the motion reads that Brisbane City Council commits to buying all future buses from South East Queensland manufacturers. It was moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Griffiths and speakers so far have been councillor Cassidy and councillor Murphy. Oh, just waiting for the, for the papers just to be handed out so that all councillors in the chamber are aware of where we are in the debate. Billy, I believe councillor Johnston, thank you. I think that's everyone. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? No further. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. This one is an interesting one because we know this was a classic case of an own goal by the Labor councillors, where they have consistently said that Queensland bus manufacturers can do things that they weren't equipped to do and they weren't funded by the state government to do. And we saw a number of years ago Minister Bailey release a policy which sounded great at the time and that would, that was setting up a target where all future buses in the urban fleet would need to be zero tailpipe emission by a certain date, that was 2025, and then proceeded to do absolutely nothing to achieve that. And in fact, as usual, Minister Bailey left it to everyone else to do. And so we heard, and we've heard councillor Murphy say repeatedly in this chamber, that the industry raised serious concerns about the ability to deliver on this commitment that they had made. It was obviously a knee-jerk commitment, it was obviously something that they hadn't thought through and it was obviously something that they hadn't consulted the industry on. In the case of Brisbane, and I can speak in terms of our situation, to achieve that target, to buy either, either electric or hydrogen buses, for example, you are talking at least double the cost of a Euro six diesel emission bus, like Euro six emission diesel bus, double the cost. And so you would assume that if the state government was serious about their commitment, that they would stump up half the cost of these new buses because it was their policy and their commitment. But no, in fact, there has been repeatedly no extra funding provided, despite the fact that we have pleaded with the state government to provide extra funding to enable us to roll out electric buses. There has been no such funding coming. And so we have the situation where the knee-jerk policy from the state government has created an uncertainty in local industry because no one's buying anything at the moment because we don't have certainty from the state government and there's certainly no funding from the state government, where one of our local operators literally threatened to pull out of the state because of the state government's dithering and the, the way they have botched bus procurement. And so we recently saw the state government stepping up and saying, oh, we'll buy a whole stack of, not electric buses, but diesel buses, diesel buses from that local provider. So, the same minister and the same government that said we should all be going towards electric or hydrogen, zero tailpipe emission buses, botched it so badly that they've now had to buy, how many diesel buses councillor Murphy? 200 diesel buses. 200 diesel buses. So, I won't be lectured on bus procurement by anyone from the Labor Party. I will not be lectured by the Labor Party on bus procurement. They have completely botched bus procurement. And so what we will be doing here is supporting local procurement, but we will do so based on the results of a tender process going forward. And so unlike the state government, we won't necessarily just be going with one provider in a sole source arrangement, we'll be going out to tender. I want to make that very clear, we'll be going out to tender and we'll be putting that out there to make sure that our bus procurement needs going forward will be able to be met. We still need that certainty from the state government, obviously, when it comes to what type of vehicles or buses that we can procure going forward. And we still need to know that there is competitive tension in the process because the deal that the state government signed up to involved no competition, a sole source arrangement with one provider, and we've already heard that the costs of going in that arrangement have significantly increased for the taxpayers of Queensland. And so we want to make sure we protect the interests of Brisbane residents, we want to make sure we get the best outcome. And so what we will be doing is moving an amendment to this motion to add, Brisbane City Council commits to local content in future bus procurements, subject to funding support from the state government in order to meet the zero emission bus targets they set. So, I move that amendment.
Seconded.
Could I grab a copy of that, please? An amendment has been moved, an amendment has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor, sorry councillor Murphy. Brisbane City Council commits to local content in future bus procurement, subject to funding support from the state government in order to meet the zero emissions bus targets they set. Lord Mayor.
And so what this amendment does is, it makes our intent very clear that we want to work with local manufacturers to deliver our future bus needs, but it should be done through a competitive tender process and it needs to be done with some kind of funding surety from the state government on this. We can't go this alone, we can't do this alone. If the state government policy doubles the price of a bus, which it's doing, the state government should stump up with at least half of the money to buy those buses. It's pretty simple. And we know the state government has gone into partnerships with private operators to do exactly this. They've helped to fund new electric buses here and there in small numbers for private operators. They've helped to fund depot improvements involving charging facilities for private operators, yet they have not put a single cent on the table for Queensland's largest bus operator, the Brisbane City Council. And this is, it just smacks of what councillor Wines was talking about there, where the Transport Minister continues to target, in some kind of weird obsession, Brisbane City Council because of his political affiliations and some kind of historical thing that he's got going on there. And it is not fair, Brisbane residents and ratepayers are missing out because of his political games and what we need going forward is some surety of funding. We are happy to work with local industry to meet our needs, we are happy to go fully electric, but we need to do so through a competitive tender process and we need that funding surety from the state government. So, we can achieve these things, we can achieve the ambitions put forward here, but there's two things that need to happen in order for us to do that. And as I said, the competitive tender and funding surety from the state government.
Thank you. Further speakers to the amendment. councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. And there's one thing the Lord Mayor still won't say in this debate. He still won't say that he supports local manufacturing and Australian manufacturing. I listened carefully to what he said then and he still won't say he supports...
Just one moment councillor Cassidy. Point of order, Lord Mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted, thank you. councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
He might want to actually, thank you Chair, he might want to actually say that then. He might want to actually say that he does support local manufacturing because what he did, what he did in tearing up the bus building contract with Volgrin was to turn his back on local workers and was to go to a Chinese company and buy electric buses to run on the city loop. And that's what, that's what this motion was laid on the table for originally, for two years, more than two years, it was August 2021, this motion was laid on the table because the Chair of the Transport Committee councillor Murphy said they wanted to wait for a period of two years to see how the trial went. We presume that must have been a success, but there were some issues along the way, Chair, with those Yutong buses. Instead of buying locally-made content for that trial, this administration, led by this LMP Lord Mayor, decided to buy overseas-made buses. Thought they'd be great fanfare about welcoming these Chinese-made buses to Brisbane. He was sorely mistaken because that was a slap in the face of local workers. There were so many issues with those buses that one of those Yutong buses broke down and they couldn't be fixed, so that company had to ship a whole new one out.
Point of order Chair.
A whole new one out.
Just one moment councillor Cassidy. Point of order councillor Murphy.
Councillor Cassidy, take a question.
Councillor Cassidy, would you take a question? No, councillor Murphy. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. So, the, the bus couldn't be repaired, so the company just shipped a whole new one out. That doesn't sound like good value for money for the ratepayers of Brisbane.
Just one moment councillor Cassidy. Point of order deputy mayor.
I'm sure councillor Cassidy wanted to speak on the previous motion, but we are debating an amendment now and he needs to redo his notes to the amendment.
Thank, thank you councillor Cassidy. We are, we are, yeah, sorry, we are on an amendment, just so you know.
Thanks very much Chair. So, those buses were such a failure...
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Just so I'm clear on this, we've had a motion moved, urgency's been allowed, the Lord Mayor has proposed an amendment, oh, taken off the table. So, an amendment has now been proposed, but an amended motion has not been passed.
No, we're...
So, right, so we can debate the original motion and...
No. No, 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 no.
I'm sorry, where...
Councillors, please.
That was councillor Wines who was shouting across the chamber and I'm sure you want to name it.
Thank you councillor, councillor Johnson.
But an amendment inherently changes the, the original motion. So, surely you can have debate about why the amendment is changing the emotion and whether that's a good or bad thing. Is that correct, Mr Chair?
That's where we are in the debate, yes.
Great. So, what was the deputy mayor doing just then, please?
The deputy mayor was calling a point of order on the debate of the proposed amendment in relevance, that's all.
Right, but she wasn't, that was not upheld though, is that correct?
No, that's right.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Cassidy has the call.
Yeah, there hasn't been an amendment passed, that's the key, that's what she was implying.
No, we're...
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, thank you. councillor Johnson, we are debating the proposed amendment. Thank you. councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much Chair. So, we know that those Chinese-made buses have been a disaster in terms of their longevity. There were warnings that they wouldn't last as long as a locally manufactured electric bus. The lifespan of a locally-made bus could be up to 20 years. We know that those Chinese-made buses were eight to 10 years. Well, in fact, one of them lasted less than two years on this trial of zero emission buses that's been running around, the city loop trial, and that's where the genesis of this motion came from. But we know the Lord Mayor doesn't support local manufacturing because he uses weasel words all the time, he won't actually commit to it. We know that this has been...
Point of order.
Just one moment councillor Cassidy. Point of order deputy mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented again.
Noted, thank you.
We know that this has been coming down the road for a long time. In fact, we asked this question over the last few years in budget information sessions and despite council and despite this LMP administration knowing that the transition to zero tailpipe emission buses had to happen, what we found out over the last few years is they did absolutely no work. And that's true to form to this LMP administration, they just sat on their hands like they did with their housing plan, sat on their hands, wouldn't produce that. They're conservative, they're resistant to change, but ultimately what they like to do is pick a political fight and that's what the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy and councillor Wines is all about, trying to save their own political skins by picking a political fight. The Lord Mayor's had lots of opportunities...
councillor Collier.
You can laugh out loud, but you can't interject, that's, yeah, of course. So, the Lord Mayor's had lots of opportunities to put on record his support for local manufacturing. We know with the metro buses, that the procurement document said that they specifically couldn't look like a bus, so they shut out local manufacturers from tendering for them, even though they were proposing electric buses for the metro to be built here in Brisbane, or here in Australia for that matter. We know that they shut out the local manufacturing industry when they were ordering Yutong buses because they wouldn't work with the industry to develop the capacity to build electric buses as we needed. And we've heard that time and time again from this LMP administration. They sort of talk in these broad motherhood statements about value for money and about a procurement process, but they've shown time and time again that they don't have a strong commitment to local manufacturing. And we see that again today because the Lord Mayor sort of talks about Brisbane's bus manufacturer at Volgrin there as something that's sort of separate to council in his eyes. as something that's sort of separate to council in his eyes. But what he fails to mention is that all of those buses that were built were built in partnership with Volgrin. It was a partnership between council and that bus builder. And that goes back a very long time. In fact, that partnership, not necessarily with that company, but a partnership between council and bus builders manufacturing locally made buses for Brisbane people goes back almost 100 years. They used to be built at the Tuong Depot in a council. And then the new partnership with Volgrin saw that move to Eagle Farm, the trade coast land there, which is lo and behold partly owned by council. So the Lord Mayor is sort of making out as if it's somebody else's problem in this debate, in moving this amendment here today. Shifting the blame, picking a fight with the state government. Jeez, that sounds very familiar, doesn't it? It's the LMP playbook. The LMP under councillor Shrinna has no vision for the future when it comes to local manufacturing. He's got the pre-prepared notes that he reads from about his percentages here and his percentages there. Certainly doesn't have them when it comes to what's being cut from the budget. But he doesn't have any future for what the manufacturing industry looks like here in Brisbane. And I guess that's because he's from central casting when it comes to the LMP. Because we know what their commitment to local manufacturing is. We saw that under the Abbott government, the hollowing out of manufacturing of vehicles in Australia. We see that under the LMP here in Brisbane, the hollowing out of manufacturing of local vehicles here. And Brisbane can make electric buses. The depot out at, which council is a partner of, out at Eagle Farm, is one of the most advanced manufacturing plants for buses in the world. It's something we should be extremely proud of. And that partnership, we should be extending that. But because the Lord Mayor dithered and delayed for years and years and years, Volgrin were about to make the decision to close up that plant and move out of Brisbane entirely, move those operations not only down south to Victoria, but also offshore. They were looking at moving those manufacturing jobs offshore because this LMP council dithered and delayed and wouldn't commit to local manufacturing. So instep the state government. The Lord Mayor likes to get up and criticize the state government for procuring 200 buses, of which a quarter will be electric vehicles, zero tailpipe emissions. He omitted that part. Committing to a transition to zero tailpipe emissions. Imagine if we had a leader in council, a Lord Mayor, that would actually commit to a future of manufacturing here in Brisbane and do everything they could to secure local jobs and do everything they could to secure local manufacturing and go out there and talk to Volgrin and talk to those workers and make that commitment, just like Tracy Price did. Just like Tracy Price did and went and committed to local manufacturing, to building buses here in Brisbane, to building electric vehicles and actually having the fortitude to commit to the future of Brisbane instead of being a tired, old, lazy, out of touch administration that we have here led by councillor Shrinna. There is no vision for what the future of Brisbane looks like under this LMP administration. And this proves it today. It's just cuts under the LMP. The LMP is just cuts. They cut manufacturing, they cut basic services. They cut projects and they're slashing staff left, right and centre in council. That's what this Lord Mayor is presenting as the future for Brisbane, a conservative, tired, old approach. Well, Labor will have a very different approach and will have a genuine approach to supporting manufacturing here in Brisbane.
Lord Mayor, your two points of misrepresentation.
Yeah, on both counts, councillor Cassidy claimed that I said that I didn't support local manufacturing. In fact, I'm the only Lord Mayor in the city's history that has had a local buyer policy. Eighty percent of all contracts are-
Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eighty percent of all contracts go to local suppliers. And in fact, it's usually more than 80%. And this is, this is the first time the city of Brisbane has had that. And it's something I'm very proud of. So there's a clear support for local business and local manufacturing.
Councillor Cassidy, as you continue to fail to comply with the request that I made previously in question time to take remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct in accordance with section 21.8 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby make an order, again reprimanding you for your conduct. Your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting. Councillor Cassidy, one more time, and you will be leaving the chamber. Further speakers.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnson.
Just a procedural question, Mr. Chairman. I've been given by the clerk a handwritten new motion saying amendment, but it's actually a whole new motion. Is that what is actually proposed as the amendment? Because this is not an amendment, this is a brand new motion. Is this, is this what we're debating? Because that's a, that's a motion.
This is, this is the amendment. Councillor Johnson, you've handed in handwritten amendment, proposed amendments as well.
But they say where I'm amending something, this just gives us a whole new motion.
It does, it does not. I don't uphold-
It most definitely does, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Johnson, I do not uphold your point of order. Are there further, councillor Johnson, I've dismissed your point of order. Are there any further speakers?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Johnson.
Just to be clear, you're saying that you can just move a whole new motion as an amendment. I just want to be clear on this. If this is the rule, I would like it to be clear so everybody is in the same boat, that you can just move a whole new motion as an amendment to an existing motion.
Just give me one moment, councillor Johnson. Sorry, councillor Johnson, just give me one second. I'm just getting the, the right section for you. Councillor Johnson, I do believe what has been presented before us is within section 41a of Meetings Local Law. Further speakers. See, no further speakers. We will now put the proposed, oh, sorry, write a reply, Lord Mayor. Five minutes.
Thank you. Look, I won't take five minutes. I won't take 10 minutes either. Look, this amendment provides what is a thoughtful, realistic and funded response to the issue. Because as I said before, if a state government policy doubles or more than doubles the cost of a bus, yet they're not providing any extra funding to buy those buses, how do you think that will play out? How do you think that will work? And if the state government releases a policy which the industry themselves say, this is not workable, how do you think that will play out? And so-
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, in light of your flawed ruling, I move dissent.
Seconded.
We have a motion of dissent in my ruling, moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say no.
No.
The noes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. As I was saying, the state government has caused challenges with the bus manufacturing issue, so much so that they've been forced now to try and bail one of the providers out. Their policy caused the problem. They've now had to step in and bail them out because of the problem created by their knee jerk, poorly thought through and unfunded policy. And so we are happy to go forward in partnership with local providers, provided we go through a competitive tender arrangement and provided we have a surety of state government funding to top up the extra cost that zero emission buses cost, as per their own requirements, as per their own policy. Now, we know that traditionally in Brisbane, public transport services have been funded 75% by the state government and 25% by the Brisbane City Council. In every other area around us, they are funded 100% by the state government. And what's happening here is that the state government has introduced a new policy that will cost hundreds of millions of dollars extra with no funding attached, and they have completely squibbed their responsibility. Now councillor Cassidy has pointed out that the Volgrin arrangement that we have was a long term arrangement, and he is correct. And how did we enter into that? We went through a procurement process and we locked in a particular contract, and that contract ran to its natural end. Now, going forward, it is important that we go through a competitive tender arrangement because I know that there are more than one, there are more than one company, companies, there are more than one companies that are out there that want to provide for the needs of Brisbane residents going forward when it comes to zero tailpipe emission buses. And so at this point in time, it is only fair to local manufacturers that they all get the opportunity to put in proposals. Not locking out some, but opening it up to see what the industry can offer. Now, I'm excited about this opportunity because the innovation is leaping ahead. We know that last time we went out for a procurement for electric buses, unfortunately, none of the local providers, not even the South East Queensland providers, but the Australian providers, full stop, could meet our requirements. So councillor Cassidy likes to rewrite history. Some kind of suggestion that local providers were snub? No, local providers had the opportunity to tender. They could not meet the requirements at that point in time. But we have said repeatedly that the industry has continued to evolve and innovate, and we want them to be involved. It's why we only procured four buses through that, through that procurement arrangement. Councillor Cassidy likes to say we have a fleet of Chinese made electric buses. Well, that fleet is four. We have 1,200 plus buses in our fleet. So you can see councillor Cassidy's commitment to the truth is not that strong. He likes to bend it whenever possible. And just like he publicizes that we apparently have a fleet of overseas buses or Chinese buses, we have four of them. We'd like to have a fleet of locally made buses. We'd like to have local providers and workers building those or assembling those for us. And this amendment maps out a pathway forward that we can get to that outcome. It must be tested in a competitive environment, and the state must come to the party. It's pretty simple, it's reasonable, and it's financially responsible.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We will now put the proposed amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called. Division called by councillor Hutton and seconded by the Lord Mayor. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being sent, 19 in favor and seven against.
Councillors, the proposed amendment is now the substantive motion. Are there any further speakers on the substantive motion? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, just briefly on the replacement motion that's been moved by the Lord Mayor here today. There was a time, I know there are a lot of new councillors in the chamber now, but back when I started, there were, every week, the Public and Active Transport Chair would come in and they would talk about two things. Probably was actually councillor Shrinna when he was Public and Active Transport back then. I'm sure he was told to do it, but anyway. Hook or by crook, for the first two terms I was here, you would hear two things out of the relevant Public and Active Chair. Firstly, you would hear about bus full numbers. And you would hear about where buses were under pressure or where we needed more buses and that kind of thing. I mean, that's died a death, that you don't hear about that anymore at all. But the second thing you used to hear about was how many new buses the LMP were building. And it used to be, week on week, one of the things that the LMP were proud of. But that stopped many, many years ago. And that's probably in reflection of the fact that council's bus fleet is actually going backwards. Council stopped buying new buses. They used to start, I think it was 80. And for many years, it'd be 80 a year, and then it was 60. Then it was 30, I think, and, and, you know, they don't talk about it anymore. So you have to presume it's zero. Because if they were proud of what they were doing, they would talk about it. Because they're desperately searching around for positive things to say about the city of Brisbane. But what we get instead is a process where the Lord Mayor stands up today and completely moves a different motion about local buses. The reason this is a problem is because the LMP council stuck their heads out, badly scoped the Metro project, stuffed up the Metro project, and have bought buses from overseas to support their Metro project. What has happened? The Metro project has gone badly. Costs have blown out by many, many, many millions of dollars, which I'm not allowed to talk about publicly because of the LMP secrecy. They won't come clean about the cost blowouts that we are expected to pay for out of local services. But they are cost blowouts that are the direct responsibility of this Lord Mayor and the Public and Active Transport Chairperson, who have botched the Lord Mayor's signature bus project. So no longer is this city proud of the buses they build. No longer do we talk about building them locally. No longer do we have, you know, reasonable debates about buses and the service delivery of buses. We're still waiting on a response from the Public and Active Transport Chair about the review council did months ago. I mean, I don't even know if that's coming back before the election. I know my constituents and every other constituent in Brisbane are worried about their bus services being cut. And they should be worried because this administration has promised something it can't deliver. It keeps promising there'll be more buses for the suburbs. More buses for the suburbs. Well, they're not building them, they're not building them locally. And you can note what the Lord Mayor's done here with his replacement motion today. He didn't want to amend the motion to make sure that they are built in South East Queensland. He said locally. Now, locally to the Lord Mayor probably means China, somewhere in the South Pacific area. Because that's pretty much how he thinks. That's what he shows us by his actions. So this LMP administration cannot be believed for one minute about any promise on buses. They won't come clean on the cuts to local bus services. They've stuffed up their signature project, the Brisbane Metro. It's causing pain to residents who are losing local projects in their community. And this Lord Mayor simply cannot deliver. And instead of doing the right thing and investing in local jobs and manufacturing in South East Queensland, he plays some tricky political game here to put a whole different motion in about buses. Well, Lord Mayor, the residents of Brisbane are aware that you have botched up your Metro project. They are all aware now that their Metro comes nowhere near most of their homes and will be of no benefit to them. And they are all overtly aware of the cuts to buses in Brisbane that you are proposing in your Bus Network review. So the only people who can't be believed on buses are the LMP. If they were proud of what they were doing, they'd be talking about it, and they're not. I don't reckon, I mean, apart from the odd bus for the Metro, I don't reckon a new bus got bought last year, or maybe even the year before, or the year before that. It's probably at least a term since this council bought a new bus. Now, that's the far cry. That's how far the LMP have fallen in the time I've been- Now that's the far cry. That's how far the LNP have fallen in the time I've been in council. From being really proud about investing in a new fleet to secretly hiding cost blowouts on their bus projects. That's where the LNP have Brisbane today and it's not good enough.
Thank you councillor. Further speakers? See no one rising. Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Look, there's been a lot said in this debate and I think it's important to start at, you know, what, what has caused all of this? Why are we here? Why, why has bus procurement paused? What is this great debate about with the state government? And this is all about an energy transition. That is what it is about. One third of a city's emissions are made up of its transport network. And if we want to decarbonise our transport network, we need to start by decarbonising public transport. All of which in this city, the vast majority, over ninety nine percent operates on internal combustion engines, diesel buses, same as internal combustion engine cars. So we were quite excited two years ago when the state government told us that they were serious about this transition to zero emissions, remembering of course, this council is a climate leader, we are a carbon neutral council, not a single state government department is carbon neutral. Now, we were very excited when they announced these targets, twenty twenty five for South East Queensland, twenty thirty for the rest of the state. And we actually, we didn't just sit here and wait for them to arrive with funding support. We actually went and met with them and said, look, we, we know you've got these lofty targets and that's great. But we want to work with you because these things take a very long time to set up, to transition these depots from internal combustion engine to electric or hydrogen takes a very long time. It's extremely expensive. And then we have to also set up our fleet. And as you know, and as has been mentioned in the debate by councillor Johnson, we generally will procure around about, give or take eighty buses a year in order to support sustainable local manufacturing. And the reality is, they held an industry roundtable two years, effectively two years after setting these targets. And the industry told them a number of things and I've got the document up here. The industry called for a rigorous, rigorous definition of local content because local content isn't clear. Is it a locally built bus if you bring the chassis in from overseas and you put it together here like a kit? Is that local content? Local industry were concerned about the industry's ability to meet the project timeframe. So again, the thing that we flagged with the state government years ago, that the ZEB transition would need to start to be worked on today if we were to get to an appreciable transition by the time we arrive at the twenty thirty two Olympic and Paralympic Games. The programme was seen as incredibly ambitious or overly ambitious is actually the word that TMR use in their own document. That's what the industry said about the state government's ZEB targets. Again, this is not me, this is not me being a politician. This is what industry is saying about the state's own zero emissions bus targets. And what the, what the industry will tell you.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Yes, Mr Chair, would you ask the Chair to table the document from which he is reading, please?
Councillor Murphy, I believe that was a question towards.
It's not a tablet, Chair, I can't really table it, but I can email it to the clerks to be provided to all. If you just Google it councillor Johnson, I know you're good at that, Industry Engagement Finding Zero Emissions Bus Programme, it should be, you should be able to download it off TMR's website.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Got the call.
But what we've seen, Chair, is although we've called on the state government to provide funding certainty, so that's the funding uplift required that the Lord Mayor mentioned, the difference between a diesel bus and an electric or hydrogen bus. And then the funding certainty around the infrastructure required at the depot to be able to bring those buses into service. They have not done that. They have for going on two and a half years now. They have done demonstration sized projects with every private bus provider under the sun outside of Brisbane. So once again, the regional centres are getting, you know, a couple of buses here, a couple of buses there. But nothing for Brisbane, nothing of a size and scale that is appreciable and will actually help affect this energy transition that we need. And it would be interesting, Chair, if the chamber were to learn what type of buses they were using in those trials outside of Brisbane because I have a question on notice that was asked by the Shadow Transport Minister Steve Minnican in August of twenty twenty two and he asked, what kind of buses are you using in these TransLink and Q Connect electric bus trials? And Minister Bailey answered, the trial includes five Yutong E twelve buses with four hundred and twenty two kilowatt batteries. And, and you know what, since he, since he answered this question, Keolis Downer Transit Systems have got more Yutong buses that they've entered into service in Cairns. So the biggest provider of Yutong bus services in Queensland is now the state government under TransLink. But you will never hear the two career staffers over there, the leader and deputy leader councillor Cassidy, councillor Collier, attack the state government. They are from central casting. They know what happens if they attack the state Labor government here. If they ever stand up for the residents of the city of Brisbane in this place, they'll be punished. And so they need to toe the line. They need to say what they've got to say against us. But they'll never tell the truth of the matter and they'll never actually, and I doubt very much that councillor Cassidy has spoken to industry on this. He intimates that he's spoken to industry. I'm very confident he's spoken to maybe an Australian Manufacturing Workers Union rep or two that was at the Volgrin depot maybe. But on this side of the chamber, we actually do engage with industry and we engage with industry deeply. And on this transition, industry has been deeply disappointed with the state government because industry has, and industry very, in a broad sense, has an appetite to decarbonise. They have an appetite to start the transition and they have an appetite to do local manufacturing which can support these services coming into play. And what the state government has done is very rudesque. They've set a lot of targets and they've walked away from doing anything and taking any practical actions to achieve those targets. And we, we did have a good inkling though, Chair, ahead of the last state budget, that they actually did have in one of the budget bills, four billion dollars to start the transition here in Queensland. And that Minister Bailey had worked very hard to get that in, but that the Cabinet Budget Review Committee and Treasurer Dick withdrew the money pretty close to the budget being finalised. Now, I'm not sure if that's true. I'm not sure if that's just a rumour. You know, there's a lot of, lot of Labor state government staffers out there who do like to talk. But if that is the case, then, then perhaps I'm misdirecting council's disappointment to Minister Bailey when it should be directed to Minister Dick. But the problem with this transition, Chair, is if you don't start today, every year you lose capacity, your fleet ages. You have to buy and build more buses to catch up to where you used to be. And that is the problem the council will soon have. We have mandatory fleet retirement ages which need to be met. We have now had, you know, going on three years where we haven't been building buses in Brisbane. And I think that is one thing that is shared amongst all councillors in the chambers. We do want to be building buses here in Brisbane. Several years ago when we tried to do it, industry locally was not up to the task. We now know that they are and there are products available. But we are running out of time and I'm, I'm very much wanting to reiterate to the chamber the urgency of the task. The next state budget that is handed down needs to provide funding for the infrastructure, for the vehicles to achieve the sta, those targets that the state government has set, or we won't get there and we'll still have gas buses and diesel buses taking people to the venues for the Olympic Games. And I think that that would be a great shame for our city and embarrassment that would be shared on both sides of the chamber. So it's really important that those opposites stop playing the pathetic politics of trying to blame us for this when, when everyone knows who is to blame, you know who's to blame. Just tell the truth about it councillor Cassidy. And the other thing that I will say is that, okay, yeah, sure. Well, you know what, who's building the largest electric bus depot in the country? Who, who soon will have a fleet arrive and start to take passengers by the end of next year? This side of the chamber, councillor Cassidy, and you opposed it the whole way. You didn't have anything to do with it, okay?
Councillors.
So, you know, is it the state government?
Councillor Murphy.
No, seriously, Chair, is it, is it the state government?
Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
Chair, is it the state government with a forty two billion dollar budget to support it? Or is it the council with a four billion dollar budget to support it? It's the council that will be the first opening the largest electric bus depot in the country, starting our transition. Those opposite, they're just hacks and, and they play like hacks and they come in here and they do hack things like, you know, blame us for this. Why is everyone else saying that it's the state government, but they say that it's us? And the answer is, Chair, they cannot tell the truth when it comes to the transition, when it comes to buses.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Just one moment councillor Collier. Councillor Murphy, your time has expired, but also if you are directing any comments to councillors on the other side of the chamber, can you please do it through the Chair? Councillor Collier.
Thanks Chair. This motion has laid on the table since August twenty twenty one. Two years it has taken for the LNP to pay any attention. And what we have heard just now, two years later, from the LNP mayor who after weeks and weeks and weeks, sorry, no, years and years actually of Labor councillors pressing, pressing the issue. This LNP mayor has just spent his time in this chamber trying to explain away why he wants to send jobs offshore. And after two years, the best solution that this LNP council has come up with is make someone else pay for it. This Lord Mayor couldn't possibly bring himself to back local jobs. And I think that possibly the serious concerns raised by industry, I suspect, is because they know the LNP's track record is that they favour overseas suppliers. Let's be clear that in the middle of an economic recovery from a global pandemic, this LNP council chose to send jobs and manufacturing offshore. They have no plan to make and buy local. And these are choices. These are choices made by this LNP mayor. The LNP chose to send ratepayers money and jobs over to China. That is the choice that the LNP made. Labor, on the other hand, is unapologetically clear. Manufacturing should be local. Whenever and wherever possible, jobs should stay here too. The real issue here is that the LNP know they've been caught out and they don't like it. After two years, the LNP finally have brought themselves to discuss this motion. That's two years that they could have been planning to make and buy local buses, to do anything. Instead, we know where the LNP's priorities lie and it couldn't be clearer. This council, this LNP council stands for sending jobs offshore, spending ratepayers money overseas and more cuts than ever before.
Thank you councillor. Are there any further speakers? We will, councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on the amended motion. And picking up on a point that councillor Collier made there, it's been two years, so we would have assumed over that time in which the LNP laid the original motion on the table and that this trial of Chinese buses was rolling on in Brisbane, that they'd have been doing a lot of work. You'd have assumed that. Now councillor Murphy seemed intimate that it was just two years ago that they got word about the transition to zero tailpipe emission buses. Apparently they got the tab two years ago, but we know that the procurement for those buses happened in twenty nineteen. So that was, that's a bit longer than two years ago that they've been talking, that the LNP administration's been talking to the industry about this. So it'd be going on a long time and the LNP apparently were on board with zero tailpipe emission buses from as far back as twenty nineteen. Because at the time, they said that the industry couldn't produce the buses that were needed for this city loop trial. And subsequently for council's needs. A lot has changed since twenty nineteen. We know that BusTech on the Gold Coast is producing world class electric buses. We know that Volgrin is producing world class electric buses here in Queensland, in South East Queensland. So we know that's happening and that's all happened since twenty nineteen. In fact, that's been happening for the entire time that this Chinese bus trial has been occurring on the LNP's watch. And so you would think that the LNP would have a bit of a vision about what procurement looks like in the future. You think they have a bit of a vision about what their position on local manufacturing and supporting local jobs here in South East Queensland, Brisbane, South East Queensland is. But it's become extremely clear that either they don't, after twenty years in power, have any vision for what the future of Brisbane's going to look like, or they do and it's one they don't really want to share with the people of Brisbane. Because that's, the, the LNP is not about supporting local manufacturing and that's extremely clear from the contributions we've heard in the debate today. So what, what, you know, the Lord Mayor sort of talked around in circles, I'm sure he'll clear this up in, in summing up. Talked around in circles about the conversations he's had with the minister and the conversations councils had with Translink. Because we know the arrangement in the past has been the council builds the buses and, and for the past fifteen, eighteen years in, in partnership with Volgrin and its predecessor. So council builds them, pays for them and then they are paid back through the contract. The costs are recovered through those contract payments to council. So we sort of have this whinging and whining from the LNP about this cost. We know over the previous contracts that, that a hundred percent of the cost of bus bills has been covered by the state government. So we assume, we assume then that the LNP over this period where the contract has ended to today, where they're talking about a new procurement, that they have worked out the details with the state government. You would assume that because you, you would hope that, that they aren't just in the business of picking political fights. But nothing that the Lord Mayor or the Chair of the Transport Committee has said today has given us any confidence that they've tried to work out these details, that they've been working hard over the last two years. I think it's pretty clear that they've done, they have done absolutely nothing to get Brisbane ready for a transition to zero tailpipe emission buses. Absolutely nothing. Councillor Murphy let the cat out of the bag. He's quite happy clearly for diesel buses to continue to be produced because he said they'll just buy offsets. The, the LNP would just continue to buy offsets. They have no genuine commitment to a transition to zero tailpipe emission buses.
Councillor Cassidy, point of order councillor Murphy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted, thank you. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
So councillor Murphy said this was a knee jerk, the transition to zero tailpipe was a knee jerk policy position. But we know that it's now been years, four years since this administration knew that they had to procure zero tailpipe emission buses. So that's a pretty slow knee jerk, I suppose, given the age of this administration. They, they're a bit stiff. They're not as agile. So a knee jerk to them is clearly four years. That's a pretty slow knee jerk. An arthritic knee jerk, that's right. And councillor Murphy talked a lot about what, what everyone else was doing, what everyone else was saying. He didn't talk at all about what this LNP administration were planning to do in the future or what they had done to prepare Brisbane for this. And they clearly think the whole thing is a bit of a joke, the way they're carrying on over there. But he didn't talk about the LNP's vision at all, at all. They, listening to them today, Chair, would be happy for the status quo to continue. They would be happy to continue to buy Yutong buses fully imported. That's what we can gather from the contributions of the LNP administration today.
Just one moment councillor Cassidy, your point of order councillor Murphy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted, thank you. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
And there's something councillor Murphy said which I couldn't agree with more. He said that the LNP are running out of time. He got up and said that the LNP were running out of time and I couldn't agree more. They are absolutely running out of time. They have made atrocious decisions. Whether it's about jacking up rates and misspending that money on big industry projects that have blown the budget like the metro, overseas made buses there, overseas made buses that haven't worked out on the city loop trial. I mean, this year we've seen rates being jacked up, rates, fees, charges and taxes by this LNP administration jacked up by a hundred and thirteen million dollars and they're cutting four hundred million dollars from the budget. I suspect I know why they've gone slow on bus procurement. I suspect I know why that they haven't engaged with local bus builders because they haven't got any money to spend on local bus procurement. They're jacking up rates, fees and charges and taxes, the LNP, but they're not spending it on future proofing Brisbane in purchasing new zero tailpipe emission buses. And in fact, when the offer was made to this LNP administration by the state government to go on to the latest procurement deal that the LNP, that the mayor just talked about today in purchasing those.
today, in purchasing those new buses, including electric buses from Volgrin in Brisbane, when that offer was made in the last couple of months, guess what the LMP said? No. The LMP refused to go in on that procurement offer. So a lot of crocodile tears over there in the LMP, I think. They have had every opportunity to sort this mess out, every opportunity to sort this mess of their own making out, and they've taken none of them. They've sat on their hands, they specifically designed the Metro procurement documents to exclude local manufacturers, they went to a Chinese company and bought totally imported buses that broke down, that rattled to bits, that had to be replaced entirely, and then they've got the gall to stand up today and blame and complain. Well, after 20 years in power, we deserve much better than this tired old LMP administration.
Further speakers? Councillor Whitme?
Actually, I had misrepresentations Chair.
Oh, sorry, sorry councillor Murphy, you're two points of misrepresentation.
So councillor Cassidy said that, I said we would just buy offsets in order to offset emissions. Actually, I was just stating our environmental credentials broadly. He also said that we didn't say what we wanted to do. I clearly spoke about Metro, our desire to transition to electric and hydrogen buses, and our desire to transition Sherwood as a first depot. He also said that the LMP is running out of time, and actually, I said we're running out of time for the energy transition, so I didn't say what he said that I said.
Thank you, thank you councillor Murphy. Any further speakers? See, no speakers rising. We will now put the substantive motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division seconded.
Division called by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 24 in favour.
Councillors, the voting, I believe, is, oh no, it's not unanimous, councillor Massey's not here, has passed. The motion has passed. Lord Mayor.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 6th of November 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday the 6th of November 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move on to items in front of us, I wanted to tell you the good news. We've finally received our expert assessment of koalas in the Boundary Road White Seal Reserve precinct, and particularly asking for recommendations on the best way to ensure a thriving and vibrant koala community or population in that precinct. So we received our report from Dr Sean Fitzgibbon. I tabled this report today. Dr Fitzgibbon, who's a leading koala researcher at University of Queensland, has been on the ground for the last few months, doing this study for us, and he has found that the koala population in White Seal is thriving, and koalas are abundant and thriving, which is a fantastic thing. We are the koala capital of Australia. What's clear, thank you, what's clear from Dr Fitzgibbon's findings though, Mr Chair, is that this is a complex issue. And so while some people might like to oversimplify it, particularly people who are seeking political gain, and suggest that you can solve problems in the area just by fencing the koalas in, or creating a koala prison, Dr Fitzgibbon has recommended otherwise. He has suggested that some extensions to fencing will be positive, and those are at the two entry points where Boundary Road, particularly on the curved section of Boundary Road at the top near the Dog Park, so there is a recommended extension of fencing at the top section, and there is also a recommended installation of fencing near the bottom section, or Eric Seivel Park. We will be installing that fencing as per the recommended outcome, or the recommendation from the report, but it has been recommended not to fence the vast majority of Boundary Road. And in fact, that fencing of the vast majority of Boundary Road would be seriously detrimental to the koala population. Creating a koala prison would cause problems when it comes to the breeding of koalas, the movement of koalas. And as councillor Cunningham knows, who lives in that precinct and had a koala in her front yard recently, koalas move right throughout that suburban area. Councillor Adams had a koala down on Carrara Street, a koala named Carter. And the koalas move around that precinct, and it is really important for their genetic diversity and their health as a population, that they continue to be able to move. If you fence them in, in a koala prison, their population will suffer in the long term, and that will be detrimental. We don't want to see that happen. So the recommendations of this report are as follows. Number one, connectivity between White Seal Reserve and the habitat on the western edge of Boundary Road in the residential area towards the finger gullies, it should be maintained. Boundary Road is an important habitat link, and there is lots of evidence of healthy and connected koala populations on both sides of the road. So keeping them just on one side is not going to work. Koalas found on the western edge should be conserved and managed as part of the White Seal population. There is strong evidence that koalas on the western and eastern side of Boundary Road are able to traverse the road and are part of one and the same community. Number three, existing fencing at the southern end of Boundary Road should be extended northwards down the curved section of the road and supported by koala escape poles. There is existing fencing in this location. We will be extending it, and we will be extending, and we'll be adding koala escape poles. Finally, approximately 150 metres of fencing should be installed right down the other end of Boundary Road near Eric Seivel Park, and that's at the other entry point to the Reserve precinct. We will be accepting these recommendations and we will be implementing them, because we care about our wildlife, we care about our environment, and we care about keeping our koala population healthy. So that's a good outcome, but one that is based on expert advice, as opposed to political commentary, which we've seen from councillor Griffiths and others. Going forward, I wanted to talk about our lighting up of assets. Tonight, last night and tonight, all of our assets are lit up in yellow for National Recycling Week. What a good week to be talking about our vision towards zero waste councillor Marks. This week challenges all Australians to think about their waste and consider ways that they can recycle more. Our Towards Zero Waste Strategy does exactly that, and we're very excited about the opportunities to recycle more and reduce waste and keep the cost of Labor's bin tax down on residents. Tomorrow night, all of our assets will be lit up in purple to support the eve of World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day. Pancreatic cancer is responsible for the third highest amount of cancer deaths in Australia, with a survival rate of only 12% beyond five years. On Thursday night, City Hall will be lit up in purple to support World San Filippo Awareness Day. San Filippo is a rare disease that leads to childhood dementia, which affects one in 70,000 children. Also on Thursday night, Redcliffe Place, Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in green to support the eve of National Agriculture Day. This day celebrates our country's farmers, whether they be in cattle, grain, sheep, cane or wool, or any other kind of agricultural industry. We're lighting up the bridge in support of the work they do. On Friday night, City Hall will be lit up in blue for the Lord Mayor's Multicultural Business Dinner and Awards, one that I'm looking forward to, celebrates the great contribution our multicultural business community has made to our city and continues to make. On Friday night, the rest of our assets will be lit up in purple to support World Prematurity Day. There are nearly 15 million babies born prematurely each year, and sadly, nearly 1 million of these childrens lose their fight for life. On Saturday night, City Hall will be lit up in red and white to celebrate Lapthen Independence Day. Also on Saturday night, Redcliffe Place, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in red to support the Young Care Christmas Appeal. This year's Christmas Appeal is raising awareness and funds to achieve its mission, particularly in the lead-up to International Day of Disabled Persons on 3rd of December. Just a quick update on bushfire preparedness. Last week, 3.2 kilometres of track and trail maintenance was completed across four sites, including Colo Bash Bushland Reserve, Prout Road Park, Sherborne Street Park in Burbank, and Tin Galper Creek Reserve. We built on this with another 3.2 kilometres of track and trail maintenance in Colo Bushland Reserve, Tin Galper Creek Reserve. Last week was a big week for vegetation management. Our team completed 43.7 hectares of vegetation management across 14 sites across the city. Obviously, Mr Chair, this is all part of our ongoing preparation and readiness for the season that may lay ahead. We've had welcome rain, which I know all of us have appreciated, but we continue to make sure we are as prepared as possible. This work includes the control of weeds, clean up of overgrown areas, as well as the rehabilitation of bushland areas. This was done at Cannon Hill Bushland, White Seal Reserve, Herbert Street Park, Manly Road Park, Tinchi Tambor Wetlands, Tin Galper Creek Reserve, Malkarat Outlook, Warral Park Lands, Ashgrove Scenic Reserve, Dandies Range Reserve, Wally Tate Park, Wakehold Bushlands, Kedron Brook Wetland Reserve and Capera Bushlands. The items in front of us, the first one is the surrender of land from the Belmont Recreation Reserve, being the Karina Police Station. Councillor's the trustee of the reserve from the state government, of which the existing Karina Police Station forms a part of. In 2007, QPS first approached council for suitable land to relocate the Camp Hill Police Station to. In 2009, QPS requested the current site at the intersection of Narrokrot Street and Creek Road in Karina be used, and a 10-year lease was entered into not long after. In 2019, the lease was renewed for a further five years, with the current lease due to expire in December 2024. State government recently indicated to council they believe an ongoing trustee lease for the operation of the police station is not consistent with the intended use of the site. Therefore, surrendering that portion of land back to the state government will enable the department to issue a new lot for the police station, which the state government will own and manage, obviously something we support. Item B is a significant contracting plan for the supply and delivery of passenger and light commercial vehicles. The SCP relates to the current fleet of around 400 passenger and 500 light commercial vehicles, and deputy mayor, I made an extension of time shortly, to maintain a modern and efficient fleet. Routine upgrades to the fleet are necessary, which includes council's transition to zero emission vehicles.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, seconded.
We have a move, a motion for extension, move by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Obviously, we were talking before about zero emission buses, of which we are leading Australia in the acquisition of and creation of Australia's largest and most advanced public transport depot when it comes to electric transport. We also continue to make that transition when it comes to our fleet. And as of the end of last financial year, we had 32 electric vehicles and 84 hybrid vehicles in council's passenger fleet. We're also looking at ways we can transition when it comes to the commercial vehicle fleet as well, and whether that's trucks and other commercial vehicles. So we are making the transition when it comes to passenger vehicles, we're making the transition when it comes to light commercial vehicles, and this submission enables us to continue that process and make that transition. Current contract that's in place will end in June next year, and the item before us seeks approval for council to go to market early next year. Contract once agreed to will be for a maximum term of seven years, commencing on the 1st of July 2024. The item C is the amendment to Brisbane City Plan Package O. Amendment includes the following planning scheme policies: air quality, infrastructure design, management plans, refuse, transport access, parking and servicing. Within the air quality PSP, there is an inclusion of a new air dispersion model for, as an option for planning when it comes to air quality in complex environments. Additionally, guidance on noise, vibration and dust impact plans have been updated, ensuring they can fit wholly within, sorry, as well as meeting the minimum standard design for refuse collection vehicles. During consultation in July and August this year, five properly made submissions were received. As a result, consultation report has been prepared and a minor change to PSPs have been undertaken based on this feedback. Amendment package is now before us today for adoption. Item D is the Amendment Plan Package Q. For many years, we've been encouraging the development industry to incorporate subtropical design into their buildings. Brisbane's climate, as a subtropical climate, caters for this type of design, and the outcomes from a built form perspective are attractive on our city skyline. Good subtropical design can deliver economic, social and environmental outcomes and benefit residents' health and wellbeing. This package proposes to create a new planning scheme policy, subtropical building design PSP, to support subtropical design outcomes. And for example, it adapts design elements from the Buildings That Breathe Design Guide to apply more broadly to the built environment in other locations and for other building types, not just residential. Policy will provide additional guidance and information to assist applicants in industry on our commitment to subtropical design outcomes. If supported today, the amendment will proceed to public consultation in accordance with the minister's guidelines and rules. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Hutton.
Chair, I move that we now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Councillors, we have a motion before us for an adjournment for afternoon tea, moved by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Jenkinson. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Thanks very much Chair. I rise to speak on the report before us, E and C, and asked it item C and D, be taken seri item from A and B, so there'll be two groups.
The C and D together for voting purposes only?
Yeah, I think it might not be on.
My apologies, sorry, C and D together for voting purposes only?
Yeah, so A and B then C and D separately.
Thank you.
Just on A, we're supportive of this land being surrendered to the state government so they can manage the use of it accordingly. They're obviously managing the use of it now through the police station out there at Karina. And if they've decided that's where they want the police station and they're continuing to use it, then I think the best option is for council to surrender that to the state government, given it is land that's held in trust, crown land held in trust for the, for different purposes. So instead of going through that change process, it does make sense, in our view, to transfer that land back for the purpose of a police station. Clause B is the contracting plan for the delivery of passenger light commercial vehicles. Planning for EVs, that's strange, isn't it? It can be, it can be done when the bureaucrats of council are going through the standard process of putting procurement plans together and stores board submissions, but it can't be done when the LMP are doing it, when the administration councillors are doing, as we've just, as we had just heard in the debate around locally-made buses. But the procuring of vehicles, passenger vehicles and light commercial vehicles is important, it's an important thing for councils to do, given the number of vehicles we have, and transitioning those to zero tailpipe emissions into the future is important to plan around as well. So we certainly support this procurement plan. We don't have much confidence when it gets beyond this stage, beyond the council officer stage, when it gets in the hands of the political leadership of council under the LMP currently, that they will get this right. However, we'll support the stores board submission today. The two items, C and D, are city plan amendments. And they're business-as-usual amendments that are coming back to council. The changes they're proposing are fine, but I guess the issue is fine doesn't really cut it anymore, does it? Especially when we're talking about city plan amendments in the context of the housing and homelessness crisis Brisbane is facing at the moment. When we see amendments to city plan and changes coming through this place here, you would expect a council that talks a big game. LMP certainly talks a lot about housing and homelessness, but we're not seeing any action on them. So what we have before us today, these changes and amendment packages, don't get us any closer to a solution to the housing and homelessness crisis. It's all well and good to continue to just say the word pink and bar, pink and bar, pink and bar. But what is the plan in providing solutions and providing amendments to city plan to enable the continued supply of housing? We still haven't seen the planning scheme amendment for the Carupa area yet, have we? Apparently it was, apparently it was very urgent that the LMP had to bring a TLPI, but they haven't progressed to planning scheme amendment to reflect those changes that they want to make. So the changes before us today don't make any material difference to people who are at risk of homelessness and who are facing the housing crisis we have before us today. Amending design standards don't get more roofs over people's heads. Amendments around air quality and the size of bins is important. It's important to progress, but it doesn't help a family living in a tent or raising children in the backseat of their car. So it's been another week go by, and this tired, lazy old LMP administration are at week four of their budget cuts, nearly forty-five million dollars. It's been months and months and months since the so-called Housing Action Supply Plan was released, which indicated a few TLPIs.
Just one moment, councillor Cassie. Point of order.
To the report.
Thank you, thank you. Can we draw, should we, that was on relevance, councillor, yes. Councillor Cassie, can I draw you back to the report, please?
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. So the amendments for us today, Package O and Package Q, do not address the critical issues that Brisbane people are facing at the moment, is the point I'm making. If the Lord Mayor actually had a vision to address these issues, these critical issues, he'd come clean about what he's cutting and who he's sacking, and bring amendments to this place that actually address these issues. But what we have is just a business-as-usual approach, as I was saying. A Package O and Package Q is just, this is the standard process. These items are coming back to council. They've been ongoing for years and years. The LMP's approach is just that. Their conservative approach is just business-as-usual. So even in the face of crisis, even in the face of the worst housing and homelessness crisis this city has ever seen, the LMP's approach continues to be business-as-usual, and that's before us today to see again. It's a transfer of land, a stores board submission from the council bureaucracy, because it had to be done, because there was a certain date on a document that needed to be renewed, and some business-as-usual amendments to city plan. So I guess, you know, if you want to see a council led by the LMP continue to just tinker around the edges, not bring innovative approaches to address the critical issues facing Brisbane, you vote for the LMP. But if you actually want to see change, and you want to see progress, and you want to see a council full of enthusiasm, you get rid of them. And that's the bottom line. When you look at what this lazy LMP administration continue to bring to council each and every week, I mean, there's mass confusion. Mass confusion on the LMP side. I remember three weeks ago councillor Murphy saying, in two weeks, the budget review will be brought, which was last week. We're now hearing that'll be November twenty-eighth. So I guess the LMP chairs don't know what the Lord Mayor's office is doing and what they're cooking up when it comes to these cuts. And I guess the chairs of these committees don't really know what the council officers are bringing to E and C as well in terms of amendments and things like that. It's, this is not a council administration that is full of energy and ideas to take Brisbane forward to twenty thirty-two and beyond. They, they, they say the words, but their actions certainly don't, don't measure up to that. And that's what we've got before us today, a tired, old LMP administration continuing as business-as-usual, which is really disappointing for the people of Brisbane.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item B, which is the Significant Contracting Plan for Supply and Delivery of Passenger and Light Commercial Vehicles. The Shrima Council is committed to steering Brisbane towards a cleaner, greener and sustainable future. With approximately four hundred passenger and five hundred light commercial vehicles in our fleet, this SCP before the chamber today appropriately balances operational requirements with our environmental goals. So while this item revolves around the acquisition of vehicles, it's not just about the current purchase. It's a strategic move in our plan to transition our passenger fleet to electric by twenty twenty-eight. Council has been at the forefront of embracing electric vehicles, maintaining a portion of our passenger fleet as battery-electric and hybrid electric vehicles for a decade. We pride ourselves on being early adopters, actively engaging in trials of new vehicle technologies to stay abreast of industry advancements. It not only ensures the efficiency of our fleet, but also aligns with our commitment to sustainability and then transition to zero-emission vehicles. So this item seeks to undertake a public tender in early twenty twenty-four, given that this contract will expire on the thirtieth of June twenty twenty-four, and the new contract will commence on the first of July twenty twenty-four. And this will be to identify a panel of dealerships and manufacturers to provide access to a wide range of vehicle brands and models. Chair, it is important that we keep our fleet moving at the best possible value for money. So the item today before us strikes a balance between the operational requirements of the fleet, while focusing on value for money and our zero emissions target. I commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item C, which is Amendment O. As the Lord Mayor said earlier, the amendment package is about five planning scheme policy changes, and these follow consultation. The five changes relate to air quality, infrastructure design, management plans, refuse and transport access, parking and servicing. Changes to the policies include the inclusion of a new air dispersion model as an, as an option for planning an air quality report in complex environments, for example, residential towers near pollution sources. Updates to guidance provided on noise, vibration and dust impact management plans to ensure the relevant control measures are in place and address any pollution sources that might be nearby. New non-residential refuse service frequency requirements, and new refuse generation rates for non-residential development. And finally, update to the minimum standard design for refuse collection vehicles to ensure the vehicles can stand wholly within the site for collection. Public consultation was undertaken in July and August through various communication channels. The submissions received have been reviewed and minor changes made to the amendment package, including a minor update to wording to reflect technical advice and feedback. Changes such as these ensure our planning scheme remains robust, resilient and current, and it reflects changes over time in line with community and industry expectations and standards. And I commend that item to the chamber. So moving on to item D, Amendment Package Q. We know that Brisbane residents and visitors value our desired outdoor lifestyle. We relax and entertain at home more than any other large city, and our natural environment plays an important role in preserving this subtropical character. As our city grows, we have the opportunity to shape our city's future in a way which embraces our distinctive climate and architectural traditions. Brisbane needs exemplary buildings that respond to and embrace our subtropical climate and showcase our city's urban character and outdoor lifestyle. Whether it be building walls and windows that open up to natural light and air, capturing ambient daylight and cooling breezes, and in turn reducing costs and energy needs. Or greenery that is growing within the streets, rooftops and walls, injecting life into our city and enriching our urban biodiversity and habitat. It is these design elements featured in council's New World City Design Guide, Buildings That Breathe, that have been adapted into this new planning scheme policy, the Subtropical Building Design PSP. Sustainable, livable and well-designed subtropical homes are also a priority in Brisbane's Sustainable Growth Strategy, our housing strategy. As such, the strategy includes the following initiatives: Embedded subtropical design principles into city plan to ensure new residential buildings are appropriately designed to suit our climate and lifestyle, and increase awareness of quality subtropical design outcomes and importance of Brisbane residents' quality of life and the livability of their homes. Designing our buildings to embrace the benefits of our subtropical climate not only contributes to the identity and experience of our city, but it can also deliver economic, social and environmental outcomes and benefit residents' health and wellbeing. Now, I will leave the, I recommend this particular item to the chamber, and I am somewhat interested in councillor Cassidy's comments on TLPIs, which I'll refer to later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on hopefully all four items, if I have time. And I'd ask that item, item C is taken serial item for voting purposes, please.
Noted. Thank you.
Yes, firstly, with respect to the stores board submission for item B, which is passenger and light commercial vehicles. I understand the, understand council's desire to have a zero emission fleet, and it's a very desirable objective. It is something I think that council should be working towards. I do have some concerns with the way in which council is working towards that objective. And that's the problem with this stores board commission, submission here before us today. All over this submission is clear concern by council officers that the price of EVs is being driven through the roof and that the current market is unable to deliver on council's needs. That is very clear in terms of the risk and the challenges that are faced by replacing council's existing fleet with a fleet of zero or, in some cases, very low emission hybrid vehicles. I, I think that council needs to approach this differently. Whilst we are heading towards, you know, a sustainable Olympics and all these sorts of things, I don't think council should be manipulating the market in a way simply to achieve an outcome that comes at a huge cost. Because the issue we're talking about here, by replacing council's existing fleet of vehicles with a new fleet of EVs, is cost. It's going to be phenomenal, as we know. The cost of an electric vehicle is often more than double the cost of the same type of vehicle in a different range. So the issue then becomes, what is the best value for money in terms of council's, in terms of council's purchasing power, and how we should go about replacing our fleet? Now, we know that every four years councillors are told to replace their cars. And I did push back on that last time, and I kept my car. It was in excellent condition. I kept it. It's a great little car. It's economical to run, and it's a manual, and I like driving manual. I think one of the big issues we have is that council simply requires us to use and dispose of a vehicle without thinking about the end life of it. And also, if we're moving completely to environmentally sustainable vehicles or electric vehicles, there are huge costs that come with doing that in terms of the infrastructure needed to support the charging of electric vehicles, the infrastructure for people to do that, both in their homes or at their offices or at council depots. Currently, we know that only some council premises have solar power, and solar power provides a minuscule part of the overall reduction in council's carbon footprint. So what we end up with getting, if we go down the path that council is suggesting, is that we're going to spend an enormous amount of money upfront to buy electric vehicles. We'll have to spend an enormous amount of money upfront to install all the associated infrastructure needed to charge and maintain those vehicles. Yep. And we're going to then have to look at how that extra power load is actually managed. Because we know that currently ninety-five percent of all emissions by council are offset with dodgy carbon credits purchased through a broker that has been disgraced around the world. And that, that's not good enough. So we're just going to buy more, more offsets to pay for the additional power requirements that we need. So in my view, there's not a well-thought-out strategy here. Buying environmentally friendly vehicles is a great idea. I have no problem with that. And as I've said at the beginning of this, it's how we do it. That's the challenge. So I, I think the problem with the way council goes about this is it's, it's a, it's like a bull in a china shop. It, it just goes in, it goes, we must have X number, we must have this way, we must do this, and that's where we get the problems. So I have some concerns with the how that council is doing this and the additional costs that will be incurred because of what council has been talking about with this. With respect to item C, the amendment for Package O, this is the amendment to the traffic waste and some other chain, planning changes to city plan, planning scheme policies. There is a real problem with the way that council assesses waste. And if you'd listened to councillor Allen earlier, you would be forgiven for thinking that these new standards will ensure that council vehicles can wholly attend on a medium or high-rise density site and collect rubbish. That's actually the current standard. Not only that, I suspect this council is weakening the current requirements, which actually require a vehicle to be able to enter into a site, turn around and exit. Now, we know council does not approve this. Over and over and over again in my ward for medium density and in other parts of the city for high density, council allows huge trucks to rock up, block the footpath, and then to unload giant bins that are located in a side setback adjoining a neighbouring property, where it shouldn't be either under the planning scheme. And this might happen two or three times a week. So council's planning scheme policy, council's implementation of that planning scheme policy, and the way in which developers have been doing what council's now going to allow them to do for years and years and years, will be a detriment to people who live in units. It will be a detriment to those people who are walking on the footpath that will have to wait for a giant rubbish truck that hangs over the footpath, waiting for them to pick up their rubbish and back out. And if you live anywhere near where these bins are on the first story, the second story, or in the neighbouring building, you've got to cope with noise pollution, three in the morning, four in the morning, five in the morning, which is not what the planning scheme was intended. Rubbish collection is supposed to be underground, and the reason for that is to help minimise noise nuisance. So this council is now giving developers the right to do what council has let them do contrary to the planning scheme for many years, and I don't think that is good enough. It's such a battle when it comes to waste, because when you look at planning schemes, in almost every objection that I put in a submission for, one of the issues that comes up is about waste. The first thing developers do is want to put their bins in the side setback or the front setback where they're supposed to be landscaping. And when you say, well, hang on a minute, that's not what the scheme says. It should be centrally located, under the building, you know, the council officers don't push back on this. They have allowed developers all over Brisbane pretty much to turn our front streetscapes and our side setbacks into rubbish tips. That is what has happened. And they have allowed huge vehicles that don't fit under the height of the podium to actually then come along and collect that rubbish, which then impacts on the footpath network and the road network. So in my view, councillors got this wrong. And I raised this last time that this matter came through, and I think the changes council have made are just going to make it worse. They're just going to make it worse, because there's now not even going to be an attempt to make sure- to make sure that noise is mitigated. And there are so many LNP councillors sitting over there who are brand new, that have got high rise in their communities, that will be going, oh, what are you talking about? Well, you're about to find out. Because the people in the apartment blocks in your units are going to start going nuts when rubbish is being noisily collected on the footpath. I don't think this amendment is a good one. I think there was an opportunity here to do some things that improved both traffic and rubbish collection in our city. And I think that yet again, the LNP have bowed to the pressure of the developers rather than undertake good planning changes to make sure as the city grows and densifies in some parts, that the impact of that densification is minimised upon the people who live there and who use that neighbourhood.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Further speakers? I see no further speakers. Lord Mayor's not here to sum up, so we will now, oh, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I'm summing up, but I'll also speak on the items then. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr Chair. The items before us today, mainly the items that we just heard, the, the comments about item B on the contracting plan for passenger and light commercial vehicles. And yet again, the councillor Chenison seems to have not read what was actually before us today. This is not signing a contract for EV vehicles. This is not signing off the purchase of EV vehicles at an amount of money. This is seeking the delegation to go to a public tender early next year to identify a panel of dealerships and manufacturers to provide access to a wide range of vehicle brands and models. Can I say, we pride ourselves on being early adopters of being carbon neutral, of being clean, green and sustainable. And that also involves engaging in trials of new vehicle technologies to make sure that we actually stay up with the industry advancements. On one hand, we hear from them that we're always behind. We're always behind the Conservative LNP. And then on the next argument, we hear that we're too far ahead. We're too far ahead. So you know what, though? We are early adopters.
Councillor Griffiths?
What did he say?
Councillor, pardon me, Councillor Griffiths, we're not calling out across the chamber. Deputy Mayor?
But we are working hard to be early adopters and investigating the industry advancements in zero emission vehicles. Not to mention, it's important we keep our fleet moving at the best possible value for money as well. So that is exactly what today's report does. It strikes the balance between making sure we have the requirements for our fleet, but going to a panel dealership that may be able to give us the opportunities on our zero emission targets well, if it is at the right price. And it is a direct-to-market model, so we will be talking to many, many dealers to make sure that when we are looking at maintaining and replacing the vehicles that need to be replaced, not replacing the entire fleet in one holeless bolus go, but going through the fleet when they are expected to be replaced. That can be based upon the knowledge that we have that is out in the market. We have already installed one large capacity EV charger and one small capacity EV charger at Weycol so that we can test the infrastructure. Exactly what we just heard again, the councillor Chenison say that we should do. Done. Now, I just hear, and I'll take the interjection from councillor Johnson, that we should have more than one testing facility as well. Now we're getting into the financials of why we should put them everywhere and then if they don't work, it doesn't matter. It's not how we do it. Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Don't know if you can claim to be misrepresented from an interjection that you're not allowed to do, but anyway. So what we're...
Councillor Griffiths, don't just say. Deputy Mayor?
So nice to have you back councillor Griffiths. Thought you were gone there for a while. But what we have here today is a balanced approach to replacing our vehicles as they need to be replaced with an opportunity to look at EV moving towards zero waste, moving towards zero emissions and doing it in a sustainable and financially responsible manner. And as for the other amendments, again, I'm glad to hear that councillor Cassidy is very keen for us to get moving with that Kerripa precinct amendment because we're working on it as well. There's plenty that we're doing in this place and the amendments continue to go. It would just be nice if the state government ever wants to get them off their desk to get them back to us in the long run. I put the report to the chamber.
Thank you. They're being, oh, sorry, councillor Johnson, your misrepresentation, my apologies.
Yes, thank you. Firstly, councillor Adams has misrepresented my speech by suggesting that somehow it's not all council vehicles that are being replaced. That's what it says in paragraph 18 of the report before us today, that it is all eligible passenger vehicles. And she also stated that I'd said there should be more than one...
Deputy Mayor?
There should be more than one electric vehicle charging station. I did not suggest a number and simply suggested we needed to have a better plan to manage the introduction of electric vehicles in the fleet.
Thank you. I'll now put the report of items A and B together. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item C. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier on item C. All eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 16 in favour and six abstentions. Councillors, item C has passed. Sorry, didn't think the chamber wanted to hear me cough. We'll now put item D. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bells. Yes, councillor Johnson, yes, item D. Package, package Q. Councillors, a bit of quiet please. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 17 in favour and six abstentions.
Councillors, item D has passed. Thank you. Please return to your seats. Deputy Mayor?
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday the 13th of November 2023 be adopted. Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday the 13th of November 2023 be adopted. Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And it's my great pleasure to stand here today to support item A in this report of the appointment of Danita Parry as the councillor for Marchant Ward and the membership of the council's standing committees as well. As the City of Brisbane Act allows, as many councillors and this everybody knows, councillors can be attuned to the role of councillor within the year of the next election. And that's exactly what's happening here. Danita is a mother of two and has a very impressive background in corporate affairs, including senior roles in Telstra. I had the great pleasure of working with Danita in the past and I look very forward to working with Danita for many, many more years to come. Danita's appointment will take the number of women in our team to 65%, which is 13 out of 19 councillors. And as I always say, there is something achieved by merit and with open and transparent pre-selections, not something that the other side can identify themselves with at all. But we are very, very proud to welcome Danita Parry as councillor for Marchant Ward and we look forward to her working with us in our strong Shriner team for years to come.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? I see no one rising. We will now put the second Establishment and Coordination Committee report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic, Paralympic Games Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee held on Tuesday the 7th of November 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 7th of November 2023 be adopted. Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you. I hope everyone's listening because I need to go through the free workshops that are at the Business Hub coming up in the next week. It is going again, strength to strength into their fourth year of work at the Business Hub. On the 15th of November this week, at 9:30, we have Turn Your Dreams Into Reality with Neuroscience. We have the NeuroTrust Institute doing an interactive workshop on how the brain science of success can help you turn your dreams into reality in your career, business or other areas of your life. Then on the 21st of November, 9:30, enhancing your workforce with global talent. So by attending the workshop, you learn about how to access global workforce, strategies available to support the global workforce and navigating visas, sponsorships and independent pathways. And that's being delivered by our friends Passage Migration Consulting. We have to thank all of our business experts and partners that do a wonderful job in delivering those free workshops across the weeks and years that they've been at the Business Hubs as well. So we got some feedback from Maurice and attendee Bronwyn, who went to what if big companies and SMEs could actually talk together, said it was just not a place where I've connected with remarkable individuals, but a delightful venue for hosting workshops. The setup to the conclusion of each session leaves me feeling invigorated and fulfilled. Staff members consistently exude positivity and make every effort to ensure a delightful working environment. So I have to say, I agree totally. The team over at the Business Hub are absolutely outstanding. And I will continue to make sure everybody hears about it and knows when those workshops are on. Another team that has recently done the most outstanding role is our International Relations and Multicultural Affairs, who hosted for us the 2023 APCS, which is the 14th time we've had an APCS, the ninth time we've hosted it in Brisbane. And it was shaping cities for our future. That was the, the, the name of the conference. It was around cities of connection, cities of sustainability, cities of legacy. We had 1158 delegates, 171 cities, 118 mayors, deputy mayors or equivalents and a population of over 350 million represented by the cities who came to Brisbane for that week. There were 181 speakers and facilitators, 78 exhibitors, 40 sponsors and partners, 140 young professionals, which had a fantastic time in the programme run by Griffith University. We do have a marriage and a baby out of the young professionals over the last few years. So we're hoping to always keep track of how we go with the meet and greets there as well. And of course, we had 58 to 42% public to private delegates as well. So a lot of the private community came to meet with government. Some of the key programme elements, the mayors forum and accord, the programme and the speakers, the app, which everything was digital, no paper handed out, where you could actually meet other people and sort out meetings face-to-face with other people. As I mentioned, the Young Professionals Forum, the City Leaders Forum and then Market Square and Innovation Alley. It was an exciting three days that were topped off by keynote speakers, Beau Seo, World Debating Champion and coach of the debating at Harvard University, Mr Charles Montgomery, who is a city doctor based in Canada, Anthony Pratt, CEO of Visi, and of course, Andrew Liveras, who gave a most outstanding inspirational speech about the leverage that we are going to get out of the 2032 Olympics. We had fantastic partners, sponsors and supporters. I thank them all. And I thank the team that did such a wonderful job. They're a small team, but wow, they're effective. And the feedback that I've gotten from right across the world has been outstanding. I look forward to APCS 2025. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there further speakers? See no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 7th of November 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
Sec, thank you. It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 7th of November 2023 be adopted. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Transport Committee last week were treated to a presentation on our public transport facilities. Last year, we saw around 190,000 passengers use our bus network each and every day. And our patronage is fast approaching pre-COVID levels. So to support that significant number of trips, Chair, council maintains a network of almost 6,000 bus stops across the city. One of the key functions of our transport planning and operations, or the TPO area of council, is the bus stop upgrade programme. And under that programme, not only do we identify new locations for bus stops, but we have also undertaken a very significant pipeline of amenity and accessibility upgrades. Thanks to investment in that programme from successive LNP Lord Mayors, we have now over 90% of our passengers on the network who are boarding and alighting from stops that are DDA compliant, that is Disability Discrimination Act compliant. The only council in the country to have compliance of that level. Now, that's no easy task, Chair. Since we started this programme a decade ago, the average cost of a bus stop upgrade has more than quadrupled. But we have made significant progress in this space. And as I mentioned, much more than, than other jurisdictions around the state, but also around the country. And we'll continue to keep working to make this network accessible for everyone who needs to use it. Now, in the presentation, we also heard about the public transport facilities that we provide to our drivers and that includes our bathroom and meal spaces. And as I've spoken about in this chamber previously, Chair, we've embarked on an upgrade programme in recent years for our driver toilet facilities in particular. Last financial year, we converted seven of our chemical toilet facilities to sewer connections and we've identified another set of locations that will be completed this financial year. And we're continuously seeing improvement in the maintenance of these facilities as well, Chair. QR codes have now been introduced to help us more efficiently manage the cleaning and maintenance requirements at each location. And it allows drivers who see something wrong or that they don't like in one of those facilities to quickly and easily report that using the QR code system and their mobile phone. So a lot less reliance on scheduled cleaning and a lot more proactive response from us. So a great outcome, Chair. Of course, Chair, we don't only maintain public transport facilities, but we do most of the planning work for public transport services as well as our forward programme of infrastructure. Which takes me to the first petition which was considered by the committee. Council received a petition with 25 signatures requesting that we plan for better public transport in Brisbane. Now, as the chamber will know, Chair, I'm a big advocate for public transport and I will of course always advocate for better services for Brisbane. But as the petition responds notes, we are constantly working towards that goal. Public transport service and infrastructure improvements are part of the core function of Brisbane City Council. It's what makes this council different from every other council in the country. And in the last year, we have made a lot of strides in terms of that improvement. We have delivered or concepted and delivered Brisbane's new bus network, which represents the biggest review of bus services in Brisbane for over a decade. With Brisbane Metro, we are providing one of the most significant uplifts in terms of public transport capacity in the city's history ever. We are already planning for the future of Brisbane Metro as well. We've identified the priority routes for future metro lines once, once stage one is complete. And that's not to mention everything we've done to encourage patronage from our free seniors off-peak travel to free buses like the City Loop. Of course, Chair, ultimately, the responsibility... Of course, Chair, ultimately, the responsibility for planning public transport in this state lies with the Queensland Government and with TransLink. So while council does play an important role in this place, I want to place on record our ability to deliver service improvements and uplift is severely limited by the lack of growth funding that the state government has provided for buses and ferries throughout the last decade. And I won't rehash what I said in the chamber last week, but it's very clear, I think, to all of us now that Brisbane has been singled out and does suffer from receiving pretty much inflation-only increases in its funding envelope from TransLink, which severely limits our ability to provide new services. Speaking of new infrastructure, Chair, council also received a petition with 12 signatures requesting that council install improved lighting on the Moreton Bay cycleway between Bangama Street Deegan, I hope I got that pronunciation right, and Ashford Street Shauncliff. So council supports the installation of further lighting in this section to improve safety for cyclists and pedestrians, particularly when the sun goes down. We will be making a funding application to the Department of Transport and Main Roads to progress this project under the Cycle Network Local Government Grant Programme. And I'm happy to report that this response received unanimous support from the committee. Finally, Chair, I'd just like to recognise the recent retirement of Brian Bothwell, our Transport for Brisbane network planning manager. Brian's career in public transport has spanned over 45 years, 25 of those he has spent here at Brisbane City Council. He joined Transport for Brisbane as a network planner in 1999, just before our Busway network opened, and he is effectively the architect of the bus network as we know it today. He was also key in devising and developing our very popular Buzz Network, or Bus Upgrade Zone Network, the network that provides a high-frequency bus services along key corridors throughout the city. Brian's knowledge of buses in Brisbane is quite simply unmatched. Brian can tell you almost everything there is to know about any bus service in Brisbane, how many people catch it, what time of day it arrives, when it's at high frequency, when it's not, when it's most popular, and even where the passengers who use that bus come from and go to. Brian is a beautiful mind, Chair, and he is a true savant. We have lost his expertise as he goes into retirement, but one of the things that Brian has done very well is make sure to foster and pass on that knowledge to his junior team. And there are several very capable transport planners in Brian's team that are coming up through the ranks and will be able to provide that continuity of excellence in transport planning for Brisbane. So I think I speak for all of those in the chamber, across both sides, who have known and met Brian and have engaged with Brian over the years. When I do say he'll be sorely missed, but we wish him all the very best in his well-earned retirement, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on these items before us today, and note that accessibility is very important when it comes to public transport, and bus stops need to be accessible. What we've seen over the last five years is a reduction in the number of bus stops in our network from about 6,500 to 5,800 now that are DDA compliant. And as we've heard from the LMP, exemptions are now only sought when a complaint is made by members of the public, meaning that there are now hundreds of non-compliant bus stops that are inaccessible and in limbo. Footpaths to and from those bus stops are also not part of DDA compliance. And as we've found out over the years, this LMP administration put $0 into funding footpaths to and from bus stops to make them more accessible. And it was extremely telling in the committee when one of the senior LMP councillors, Councillor Huang, said that living with disability in Brisbane was bliss. That's what he said, I'm not even kidding. This is one of the LMP's most senior councillors and someone that they entrusted to run in a federal seat for them as well, but that's pretty typical of the LMP's approach to everything we've come to expect. Business as usual, do barely enough to get by. It's conservative and it's a go-slow approach, and it shows that they're entirely out of touch. They then go and cut $400 million from the budget and sack staff that do this kind of work, day in, day out, for council as well. Under Labor, that would be very different. Our Comprehensive Mobility Plan will build 50 kilometres of new footpaths a year, connecting people to public transport facilities, an ambitious plan that will change our suburbs for the better, not the conservative LMP approach we've come to expect. On item C, the petition requesting council install improved lighting on the Moreton Bay cycleway. This section, the Moreton Bay cycleway, running from Bangama Street Deegan to Ashford Street in Shauncliff, is an extremely busy and popular section of cycleway. It's very dimly lit, in fact, it's not lit at all. And it is one of the most pitch-black bikeways that I've ever been on at night time, given there's no surrounding infrastructure or houses or streetlights to provide any lighting. So I support the response before us today, which is to seek funding from the Department of Transport and Main Roads to install funding there. But I also think council should be stumping up as well. I think we should go further. These are the kinds of investments people want to see in their suburbs to make bikeways more accessible for more hours of the day all year round, to ensure that we are providing our section of the Moreton Bay cycleway that is fully usable and fully compliant going forward. So I think council needs to step up, but I do support this recommendation before us today.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item A. It is incredibly important that our public transport systems, especially bus stops, are accessible to people that are living with disability, particularly for the fact that some of the most marginalised in our community need public transport not only to create connections with people, but to be able to go to appointments, to see their doctors, to connect with other people, and to not feel so isolated in these challenges. So while it is great that Brisbane City Council has historically built a compliance of, I think from memory, 80%, it is a little bit worrying that the compliance of disability access for bus stops is not something that is always immediately built when we build a new bus stop, which is what we've actually experienced in the Gabba Ward, where we had a new bus stop built. And unfortunately, a person living with disability, Uncle Willie, was unable to get onto a bus. So while we are at a high percentage, there's a further work to do, particularly when you think of the future. If the Olympics is going to happen in Brisbane, what we actually need is a completely accessible city. A part of that accessibility means that people living with disabilities are able to not only safely go onto public transport like buses, but also be able to safely travel through from footpath and public realm. And so I think it's important to highlight that the work's not done yet. You know, the work in this space isn't done. We do have to go further, and we have to commit to accessibility is something that we need to deliver for our city, because the gaps will show soon enough. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor. Are there any further speakers? No one rising. Councillor Murphy, write a reply.
Chair, just briefly on the contribution from Councillor Cassidy and Councillor Massey. In respect of Councillor Massey, I did look into that issue with Uncle Willie, and the claim that was made in committee was that council had installed a new bus stop that was not DDA compliant, which of course was quite a surprise to the council officers and myself, because all new-built bus stops are built fully compliant. What it was, Councillor Massey, and I'm not sure if you've been misled, or you might want to correct the record in general business later, but my understanding was that this is not a new bus stop, this is actually an older bus stop, but it is newly serviced by the Blue City Glider Through You, Chair. So that's correct, Councillor Massey. I'll take that in dejection. She said it's not DDA compliant. Well, yes, there are still a number of stops across the city that are not DDA compliant for reasons that were canvassed in the committee presentation, which you will have heard. So it's always important that we make sure that the truth is told in this place, because people, you know, they watch in. I know there's only a few hundred of them, but they can be easily misled. So it is an old stop, it is on the list to be upgraded, and we will make sure, given Uncle Willie's concerns about access there, that we can get that on the list as a priority. So we'll absolutely do that, Councillor Massey, but it's important that we understand that this was not a new-built stop that was built without disability compliance. In respect of Councillor Cassidy's contribution, Chair, you know, he's just said an outright mistruth, which is that the number of stops in the city, or bus stops in the city, is going backwards. That's not true. The amount of stops that are managed by council has sometimes dropped, and that is as a result of TransLink taking control over of those key facilities and operating them. This is a programme that TransLink started 10 years ago, which was to take bus stops off council's hands into their own operations. They're proceeding at a very, very slow pace of doing that, but that is the only mechanism through which stops are no longer served by Brisbane City Councils when TransLink takes them over, or TransLink decides that a route is no longer needing to be served by a stop and removes them under their own steam, Chair, and then council, as the operator will go ahead and do that. The other thing that Councillor Cassidy said, which just does need to be corrected, he did say Councillor Huang in committee said that living with a disability in Brisbane was bliss, an outrageous thing to say, an outrageous claim that he made about Councillor Huang's contribution. What Councillor Huang actually said was that people living with a disability in Brisbane are blessed to have access to such an accessible transport network, when over 90% of the patronage stops are accessible and DDA compliant. So that's what he meant, and he was meaning that in the way that versus other jurisdictions interstate and around Queensland, Brisbane is leading the pack. And as a person living with a disability here in Brisbane, that person will have better access to public transport facilities than someone in a comparative other city or other state. So I can't let that go. And in terms of Labor's Comprehensive Mobility Plan, we all know that was a tweet several months ago, a single square box of dot points, and that Comprehensive Mobility Plan, from what I'm aware, Chair, has not grown in scope or scale since, and we yet to see any details or costings out of that Comprehensive Mobility Plan. So we'll wait and see what Councillor Cassidy's team has in store for us at the election when it comes to an actual mobility plan, but I won't hold my breath.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, infrastructure, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the 7th of November 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Wines and seconded by Councillor Jenkinson that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting, held on Tuesday the 7th of November 2023, be adopted. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr Chair. The presentation was about Victory Pocket-Kenmore intersection upgrade, but before I move into that, there was some comments major in question time regarding Vener Road in particular, and I just wanted to respond to those at this time. There was a note made that council had undertaken an obligation that it would resurface Vener Road. I will read the items that were, the items that council undertook to do when we contacted the Brisbane Coram. Those items are: Initiate a speed limit review for Vener Road between Fairfield Road and Ipswich Road. Review the no-stopping conditions of the intersections of Lagonda Street at Vener Road, Roy Street at Vener Road, Somerville Street at Vener Road, Frederick Street at Vener Road, and Clara Street at Vener Road, and to seek to remove or relocate as much street furniture as possible from the intersection of Vener Road to Lagonda Street and Frederick Street, including potential restriction on the use of advertising signage. Those three things were concluded, they have occurred. Also, you'll note in the answers to questions I noticed on the 24th of October, the council has provided information that that speed limit review referenced here was complete. Councils may also be interested to know-
Just one moment, Councillor Wines. You've got the call.
Councils may also be interested to know that we are running another speed limit review on Vener Road, which is live and open at the moment. Council also has Vener Road as part of its resurfacing programme, and that will occur within the near future. During question time, we also had a discussion about the attitude of the state government when it came to the federal government cutting the federal support for major infrastructure projects. I read in today's Courier-Meoyal Queensland Politics Live blog that the Premier has slammed the Albanese's infrastructure cash cut, and that she has hit out at the federal government following revelations that it would slash infrastructure funding contributions to the state, and she has called on them to do the right thing. I wonder if the call that the Premier made also extends to her council colleagues here in the Labor Party, whether they're ever prepared to do the right thing, and whether they were ever-
Councillor Griffiths.
I'm not sure. I missed that one, but I trust it wasn't critical of the Premier. Oh, excuse me, I'm sure. Some people have suggested that it perhaps potentially was critical of the Premier, but I'm sure that was a mishearing. But I move on. But the federal support for infrastructure projects is vital to make sure that they're delivered earlier in the pipeline. With their support, we can do more work sooner, and I think that's really what it's about. When you have massive influxes of population from the South, when you have big changes to the way people live in this city, particularly not just Brisbane City, but the Greater South East, Greater Brisbane, we have people living in West Pine Rivers, West Moreton Bay, West Caboolture, the Mooray Field area and beyond, the infrastructure has to be there. It has to be there. And the federal government stepping out of this space, the Labor Party federally stepping out of this space, has been really disappointing. That being said, today we're going to talk, last week's presentation was about the Victory Pocket Road and Kenmore Road intersection upgrade. Safety was, of course, a key concern there, and there were sightline issues, along with many commuters who were leaving the Victory Pocket Peninsula trying to enter the normal network or the main network. Between April 2018 and June 2022, there were three collisions at the intersection, the most recent being in June 2022, all of which required hospitalisation or medical treatment. Relatively recent traffic data from 2020 shows approximately 6,000 vehicles per day travel on Victory Pocket Road, and approximately 15,000 vehicles each day travel on Kenmore Road, as well as over 100 pedestrians and 20 cyclists. This data will have only increased since then, which is why it was time for an upgrade at this particular intersection to ensure the safety of the community. Additional benefits include extra space for turning lane to allow turning traffic without disruption of the through traffic, reducing congestion, improving safety and reducing congestion. The upgrade also facilitates extra space for cyclists, creating new pedestrian crossing opportunities. It also includes a significant work for battering and new retaining wall work. The intersection supports a great deal of traffic from outside of the local area, largely from the Kenmore zone, also enthusiasts of the Lone Pine Koala Sanctuary. Kenmore residents are forced to use this route to avoid Kenmore Roundabout, which the Queensland State Government continues to avoid any meaningful work. That criticism of the Premier or the state government, I did hear, Councillor Adam, and it was fair enough. Shame that they have walked away from that particular project. As council continues to pick up the slack of the state government, doing the hard yards by making our roads safer so that people can travel around them in a safe and effective manner, this is but one more great example. I will leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you, Councillor Wines. Is there any further debate? Councillor Wolf.
Mr Chair, I rise to speak of the fantastic Victory Pocket Road and Kenmore Road intersection upgrade. Mr Chair, this was always a dangerous intersection with little line of sight from either side. In addition, this little pocket is a growing area, meaning the issues that we had with this intersection would have only got worse over time. Residents of Kenmore have been forced to use this route because the state have refused to upgrade the Kenmore Roundabout, thereby redirecting traffic into this intersection. Mr Chair, sadly, as Councillor Wines has already stated, there had been many reported accidents on site prior to this upgrade, meaning this was a prioritised location due to safety. I was delighted to turn these lights on with Councillor Wines, it's been a council highlight. I'm also delighted to confirm that many from within my community, the Walter Taylor Ward, have informed me that the upgrade to this- informed me that the upgrade to this intersection is just wonderful. Traffic is better controlled, roads are safer, and we have better line of sight. The vegetation and planting looks wonderful and lush, thanks to the additional rain we've received for the last few weeks. I commend councillor Wines for this project, which rolled out ahead of schedule and under budget. Thank you to the Shriner Council for prioritising funding into road projects that gets the Walter Taylor Ward residents home sooner and safer.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Being known councillor Wines, some up. No, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, city planning, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of November, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Atwood that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of November, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did want to pass comment on councillor Cassidy's shallow and deceptive contribution to the E and C report. He made much of the amendments that were in that E and C report, and his key point was, look, we should have been doing something more substantial in the context of city plan amendments. But every time we bring a neighbourhood plan to this chamber, what happens? Nine out of 10, they don't support. So this sort of notion that we should be bringing more substantial amendments through is a little bit of a furphy, because in reality, their record shows that they don't support significant changes. More recently, the Carilpa TLPI, a very, very significant amendment to try and bring forward housing supply, they didn't support that either. Now, if councillor Cassidy's worried, I can assure him that we are moving towards amendments to the city plan, but at the moment, that TLPI gives us the power that we need to support applications in that particular precinct. And I think it's disingenuous to suggest that we aren't doing enough in this city. Now, the Queensland Government's Land Supply Development Monitoring Report shows that Brisbane has nine years of approved supply of attached dwellings. It's twice what the South East Queensland Regional Plan requires. So we are doing our bit. We have nine years of supply. Just last week, I mentioned that we'd approved in October over 1,000 new homes. We've got 142 DA's that we're currently assessing, which will give rise to 9,000 new homes. So we are definitely doing what we can to support supply in this city. I would also note that in their much touted media statement recently, the key, and I'll quote here, "The key role of council is planning and unlocking supply." Well, that is what we are doing, and it's demonstrable. We have the data that supports that. So we are doing exactly what they said we should be doing, Mr Chair. Now, it is this administration that is getting on and providing the supply and the impetus and the incentive for more homes to be built in this city. If councillor Cassidy was real about his desire to see more housing here, he would get in contact with his state and federal colleagues, who are, who are holding the big levers to help support this particular industry. They can help lower the cost to build homes, they can help increase the capacity to build homes in this city, but I don't believe councillor Cassidy is going down the road and having those discussions. They are the key issues for housing supply in this city. The latent supply is there, we've provided it, the big challenges, costs and capacity, and those are outside the remit and the control of council, but with Labour, state and federal governments who've got the levers to manage cost and capacity, councillor Cassidy should be directing his efforts there. Now, Mr Chair, moving on to the report, the submission was on 321 Rogan Road, Tegum residential subdevelopment. The development is just over 26,000 square metres, which includes 36 residential lots boosting much-needed housing supply in Brisbane. This is comprised of 27 lots in a community title scheme with a private road in common property. The community title scheme land involves common property, a body corporate and a community management statement. The remaining nine lots will be freehold with access from a new public road. The development is conveniently located close to major road networks and has good access to transport, active transport services and recreation. A short walk will bring you to the city train line at the Castle Dine train station, providing easy access for city commuters. 321 Rogan Road improves connectivity to surrounding areas by including a new 117-metre-long, three-metre-wide bike path and a 1.2-metre-wide concrete path for pedestrians. Aligning with council's greener suburbs programme, a programme that aims to improve the clean green field of Brisbane suburbs through increased tree planting and landscaping, 321 Rogan Road includes turf and street trees along the new public road. Lots in this development will range from 263 square metres to 395 square metres, which will provide for a mix of housing, topologies and construction methods. One of the lots of approximately 10,000 square metres that connects with the existing Green Corridor network in this locality will be dedicated for drainage and environmental purposes. Additionally, this lot will be rehabilitated with infill planting, weed treatment and exotic species management. This is another example of the Shriner Council supporting the right mix of development in the right locations to support the needs of the growing city of Brisbane. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Is there any further debate? Being no one rising to their feet. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division, seconded.
Division called by the deputy man, seconded by councillor Hutton. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. No, city planning, councillor Massey. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 21 in favour and one abstention.
Councilors, a bit of quiet during division, please. I know it's a bit late, sorry councillor Griffiths, but yes, it should be quiet. The report has passed. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, please.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 7th of November, be adopted. Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Wolf that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 7th of November, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, last week's committee presentation was about solar on council facilities. We all know that Brisbane is the capital of the Sunshine State. There is a lot to love about our long sunny days and subtropical climate, and it also means that we have an infinite 100% renewable energy source in solar power. It's clean, green, and there's always plenty of it to go around. And for many years, council has led the way in embracing solar, and I am pleased to say that now more than half of council's buildings have solar power. We have a huge diversity of assets across our portfolio, and when it comes to solar, we actually go through a similar process as anyone in assessing their solar needs at home. That means that there's not one solar solution for all buildings with multiple types of solar to suit multiple different sites, and in fact, not all buildings are suitable for solar at all. There are a multitude of factors to consider before selecting the solar option for the building, with shading, roof structure, building age, roof size, roof alignment, and the building's use of electricity, and when that electricity is used, for example. What this means is that when we're building new facilities and infrastructure, we work to incorporate solar into the design, like the new Roachdale Metro Depot, which is by far our biggest single solar project, which will generate 1.2 megawatts of renewable power every single day. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge has also been designed to solar power its lighting. And of course, the new Everton Park Library, which is, which my community is very excited about, will be powered by solar too. Already, all of our existing bus depots and waste resource recovery centres are powered by their own solar systems. And I'm happy to say that that's the same for all three of our environment centres. Mr Chair, earlier in the meeting, the Lord Mayor advised the chamber that we received UQ report concerning fencing options at Boundary Road, so I move that the motion currently on the table concerning Boundary Road be taken off the table.
Seconded.
Just give me one moment, councillors, while we get the motion before us. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Hutton that the motion that the Lord Mayor tables all reports findings, recommendations, official research and expert advice regarding fauna fencing along Boundary Road, Whites Hill Reserve at today's council meeting come off the table. All of those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. We, just give me one second, I'll just advise who has spoken. So councillor Griffiths has spoken, and former councillor Mackay have spoken. The mover of the motion was councillor Griffiths, and it was seconded by councillor Cassidy. Are there any further speakers? Oh, so, no, we've done the vote. Yeah, we've done the vote. Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. As this motion calls on the Lord Mayor to table the report, which is now being fulfilled, the Lord Mayor did this earlier in the meeting, as I said, and briefed the chamber on what the recommendations are. Therefore, I move that the motion now be put.
Seconded.
Councilors, we have a procedural motion that the motion now be put. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. Sounds like the ayes have it.
Division, division.
Division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Councilors, no. No, 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 no. No. Councilors, we're going to do this in silence, please. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 17 in favour and six against.
The motion to put the motion, the procedural motion to put the motion, has passed. Councilors, please return to your seat. Councillor Griffiths, you do have a five-minute write-up reply.
Oh, there is a God. Oh, I'm going to love this.
Deputy Mayor-
I'm a believer.
Just one moment, just one moment, councillor Griffiths. Just turn your microphone off for a second. Deputy Mayor, councillor Marks, we are not calling out. May I make that very clear? Councillor Griffiths, you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And look, I was really pleased to see this report come back to council today. It wasn't what I was expecting. In fact, I didn't think we'd be seeing this report this side of the election. I accept, I accept the recommendations in this report. I've got a copy of the report. I was disappointed the Lord Mayor didn't share it with all of us. He just tabled it. But I do have a copy of the report now, and what the report says is, yes, there's plenty to be done, including, including the extension of fencing along Boundary Road. The report also says that, and it, it shows in the report, I think it was close to 50 koalas have been killed, 50 koalas have been killed around Whites Hill Reserve. Not, not just on Boundary Road. Boundary Road, they quote a much lower figure, but around the whole of Whites Hill Reserve, it's, it's, as far as I can count, it's 50 koalas have been killed since 2016. And it does say it's a healthy population. So there, this is the beginning. And what this researcher, Dr Sean Fitzgibbon, says is that we should, this is a starting point, and we should go back and review this data and review, in conjunction with the community, what is done in the future, which I would wholeheartedly support. And he also gives us options to look at in the future, such as culverts, but he does say that is expensive. But he says also that they're effective. He makes a dual point. He makes a dual point that we are, we're trying to keep koalas alive. So this report does not promise that there won't be more kills on, on the road or on roads around the reserve, but it also says it's about the population of koalas moving. I accept that. I accept that, and I think that's a reasonable outcome. What we've been shown up here, and what everyone should note, is that we've voted two times now for fencing along this road, and the LMP voted against it. They voted it down two times. And then we had another motion, which I put up, asking for all the research to be tabled. All the research, pile of research, there was none. They didn't table any research. So this is the only-
Councilors, just one, just one moment, councillor Griffiths. Councilors. Thank you. Councillor Griffiths, please continue.
My point is, this is the only research council has got into what we're doing in relation to koalas in Whites Hill Reserve, and I think we need to be seeing more research documents underpinning the actual work that we're doing with the, done in conjunction with the community and with professionals such as this academic.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
Would councillor Griffiths take a question?
Yes.
Hang on. Councillor Griffiths, are you happy to take a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Johnson-
Yes, Mr Chairman, through you to councillor Griffiths. How many times did the two local councillors, councillor Cunningham and councillor Adams, vote against fencing that has now been recommended in a scientific report?
Disappointingly, both those councillors, councillor Cunningham, and I notice the deputy mayor is out of the room, she's always out of the room when I speak, both those councillors voted against fencing or any additional fencing along this stretch of road, as did all of the 19 LMP councillors in this chamber, all of them. And they also voted against giving us or tabling information because there was none. And I would suggest it would be great if the local councillors, councillor Fiona Cunningham, and the mayor, the deputy mayor, used their SEF money, use the money that was given to them by the Lord Mayor to do this fencing, like I have done along South East Freeway. It shouldn't, it should be paid for by these councillors to show, show that they're really committed to the results we're trying to achieve here with the community. So I'd like to thank the community for their passion. I think we need to, with the community, have a forum of these community groups, and maybe with Dr Sean Fitzgibbon, to talk to each other and share ideas about how we can stop this and how we can grow our koala population, and how we can do better as a council in our areas. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
Councillor Griffiths, take a question?
Councillor Griffiths has sat down. And you're also out of time. We'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division. Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Hutton. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-three in favour.
The motion has passed. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillors, are there any further speakers on environment and parks? Councillor Davis, I think you've already spoken. We have, we haven't had any other speakers for you to wrap up. Are there any further speakers? No, we'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the seventh of November, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Adaman that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the seventh of November, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Marks, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get to the substantive report on the committee, I just want to do a couple of thank yous out to a few people. Firstly, I want to thank councillor Adaman and the whole of my committee that were there last week for, to run the committee presentation and also to run, do the chamber's report. I, I had a personal issue. And on that note, I also want to, what I'll do is, I want to thank the QE2 hospital staff. I know the hospital and health system gets a fairly bad rap from lots of people. And sometimes that's, you know, potentially warranted, I guess, I don't know. But from my point of view, I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff at the QE2 hospital. It is no exaggeration to say that the triage nurse saved my husband's life. So I appreciate all the work that they did in that space out there in the resus. Moving on to more pleasant things, we also held the Halloween adoption sale recently and I was pleased to be told that we had adopted fifty-six animals out, thirty-one cats, which is a really good number, and eight kittens, and thirteen dogs and four puppies, which I think is awesome because traditionally, obviously, everyone loves little puppies and big dogs don't get so much love. So I think I was, I was really delighted to hear that thirteen dogs have found new homes. I also want to put a shout out to compliance officers. They have a hard gig and they, they do a lot of tough work out there in, in the community on our behalf. And I just want to say shout out to them for all the hard work that they do and let them know that as a Chair of Compliance, I absolutely appreciate everything they do. Also want to thank, sorry, congratulate Caitlin. She was nominated for an award at a recent waste conference in Melbourne and congratulations on getting third place, which is also pretty good. And I think a lot of you have had some dealings with Caitlin over the years and you will all agree with me that she's a pretty spectacular council officer. Moving on to the substantive report, they did a presentation on the graffiti removal, which I'm happy to leave to the chamber for any debate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marks. Are there any further speakers? There being none, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the seventh of November, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the seventh of November, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And of course, again, there is just so much to see and do in Brisbane and this week was no different. It was also a period of time when we remember those that gave up their life so that we could enjoy the beautiful city that we live in. And Remembrance Day was last Saturday. I was absolutely honoured to be asked to give the address to the Submariners event that was held down at, down at New Farm. And I just want to say a huge thank you to the Submariners. They have turned an area that has considerable significance to them into something that the local community have absolutely adopted. And I think that it's a wonderful thing to see the community come together and to pay respects, not only to the Submariners, but to all of those who gave the ultimate sacrifice and, as always, lest we forget. It was also a privilege to attend the Lord Mayor's Young Environmental Leadership Award Network and to see all the amazing work that our young people had put into saving the environment. And we are truly in, in, in great hands with our, with our future environmentalists. I also want to mention that the, the Powerhouse has partnered with Dendi and we now have the Dendi Powerhouse Outdoor Cinema. Again, I was pleased to represent the Lord Mayor at the launch and this will be something that brings a great deal of delight right across Brisbane. It is a fantastic park and to have an outdoor cinema is just, is just brilliant. So encourage everyone to have a look and to pop down. It will be open all through Christmas. It's, I think it's Wednesday until Sunday for the rest of the year, but it's a great opportunity. And Dendi were absolutely thrilled. It's only the, the second one with, I think it might be the second one in Australia that they've, that they've partnered with. And so they were very excited for that to happen. New Farm School had its Christmas market on the weekend and so again, that was fantastic. And of course, in terms of some of our wonderful creatives around Brisbane, the Australasian Dance Collective, who again do the most amazing work. Halcyon was premiered at the Powerhouse. We had the opening night at La Boite of IRL by Lewis Treston. And again, local creatives doing amazing things for our city. I was also thrilled to go along to Growl Theatre at Windsor to see Georgiana and Kitty at Christmas at Pemberley. And again, this is a community organisation, a community arts group that do amazing work. And I really want to say again, a big thank you to everyone for entertaining us so beautifully. And of course, the other big thing that happened in Brisbane last week was the, the launch of Christmas in Brisbane. And there are just so many activities. I encourage everyone to go on to the website. I'm very sad to tell everyone that the, the, the Christmas carols down at River Stage sold out in thirty minutes. So that was a, that was something like last year, I think it was an hour, this year it's thirty minutes. But what I am thrilled to tell people is that there is another opportunity for your residents to go along to, to Victoria Park and enjoy the carols that will be held at River Stage. They'll be livestreamed to Victoria Park. There'll be some entertainment there, some food trucks, and I understand that'll get underway from about four thirty on the afternoon. So please make sure that you go on to the website and let your residents know that if they've missed out on tickets, that there is that opportunity at Victoria Park. Finally, just before moving to the report, I want to say a big welcome to Poppy Lou Franklin, who joins her sister Audrey to be the newest member of our lifestyle family. And a big congratulations to Dani and her husband on the newest addition to their family. Moving to the report, we had a wrap-up of the Brisbane Festival and it's always a pleasure to, to have Lou and Charlie come along to our committee and tell us all of the amazing things that, that took place. This year's festival was a huge success. We, we think that people felt confident enough to come out and to, to go to the, to many of the performances. They had over 1.7 million people attended, over a thousand performances, and that's just great statistics. But it's even better to know that we had two Australian and eighteen world premieres, ten Queensland performances, 1,460 Queensland-based artists and art workers, seventy-five arts organisations, 230 free performances and more than 170 Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander artists. Just amazing to think that this festival, this Brisbane Festival, just continues to get better and better and I recommend the report to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Are there any further speakers? Being no one rising, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, finance and city governance, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the seventh of November, twenty twenty-three, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the seventh of November, twenty twenty-three, be adopted. Councillor Cunningham, you have the call.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Our presentation last week to committee was about the upcoming upgrade of council supplier portal. Council has around eight and a half thousand active suppliers and nine thousand prospective suppliers. The supplier portal provides businesses with notifications for new tender opportunities and, quote, sought by council to assist in the delivery of projects and services across our city. The current portal is outdated in its user interface and, and in some of its functionality as well, Mr. Chair. So one example of this is that currently only one email account is allowed for each supplier to manage their profile, which can be a problem if a staff member is on leave or resigns without the business updating their details with council first. Some features and benefits of our new platform, which is being introduced, include the ability for suppliers to update account details at any time, convenient management of tender opportunities and the tender process as well, improved supplier experience and satisfaction and a faster supplier onboarding process behind the scenes, Mr. Chair. Engagement with suppliers about these changes is currently underway and the new platform will go live in early to mid 2024 and I commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers? Being none rising, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Dixon.
Yes, I have got a petition here. The Australian World War Two Coast Watchers deserve a mainland tribute in 2024.
Thank you. Are there any further petitions? There being none, councillor Hutton, may we have a motion, please?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move that petitions be presented, oh, sorry. Mr. Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Strunk that all the petitions as be, as presented be received and referred to the committee concern for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to general business. Are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? See no one rising. Are there any items of general business? Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak briefly about council's active school travel initiative and in particular, the achievements of a school in my ward that participated in the programme for the first time this year. To say that Kenmore South State School was one of the real success stories in the programme this year is an understatement. Last Thursday night, at a civic reception here in City Hall, the Lord Mayor presented Kenmore South with the prestigious Active Travel School of the Year Award. And when I outline their achievements, you'll see why they were always going to be hard to beat for the award. Chair, as we know, the aim of this programme is to educate and motivate students, parents and teachers to reduce car use and actively travel to and from school. At the beginning of the year, 27% of Kenmore South students used modes of transport other than private vehicle to attend school. The ambitious goal of 50% was set for the year, but that was smashed by May, so it was upgraded to 65%, but that too was quickly exceeded. In August, it peaked at 71%, so who knows where it might finish by the end of this school year. Chair, I took particular interest in this when Kenmore South was chosen to participate in school active travel for 2023. I attended a number of meetings between school leaders, parents, representatives and council's active travel team, and the one thing that impressed me was the enthusiasm and passion with which teachers, students and parents embraced the objectives of this programme. A number of initiatives were devised to incentivise students to participate, which led to a friendly but competitive rivalry between classes wanting to be tops in active travel for the week. It was a proud moment to share the stage with the deputy principal, Robyn Cooney, and school parent Melissa Buddygeek to receive the trophy for Active Travel School of the Year. Kenmore South has set the bar high, but I have every confidence that they will take it to another level in 2024 and beyond. Chair, in closing, I want to acknowledge Mrs. Cooney and teachers Kristin Cowan and Chris Nelson, along with Mrs. Buddygeek, and in particular Rebecca Blower from council's active travel team, whose advice, guidance and support played a huge role in Kenmore South's success. And finally, to the public and active transport chair, councillor Murphy, for his unwavering and enthusiastic support of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adaman. Are there any further? Councillor Griffiths.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I've got a few issues I'd like to talk about. Some are related to my ward and some are related to across the city. First off, I would like to acknowledge, I don't, I don't normally do this, but I would like to acknowledge the loss of a very good friend of mine, who was a mentor to me, that was Peter North. Peter worked, lived, was a resident of Brisbane for many, many years and was also the sub-dean of the Faculty of Social Work at University of Queensland. Peter, at a time, and obviously he's, he's recently passed and I was pleased to be able to be there when he passed. But Peter was a social worker who took up the, the issue of men dying with AIDS or men living with AIDS at the time. And he, he worked to help set up the AIDS council in Queensland, which was a very contentious sort of idea at that time. And of course, people who were gay were seen as, as other. And so Peter stepped into that space as a young man. And strangely enough, he, he worked with the Sisters of Mercy to deliver support and health services for people with AIDS. So it was interesting that he worked with another group that supposedly persecuted people who were gay, but he actually found common ground with them and they provided very, very humane services at a time and for a group of people who were certainly marginalised. So vaile Peter, I will miss you greatly. Secondly, I'd just like to start on a positive note with this second point and acknowledge the great work of some council officers. Recently, I've had Shannon, I won't say Shannon's last name, step in as my PPI officer. And I just want to say, Shannon, you've done a brilliant job. Shannon replaced Claire, who was another very capable, very good officer. And she stepped in as a very effective person who listens very well and just, I've seen her work, she resolves issues very well, not just for me, I suppose, but more so for the residents I represent and for the community. And it's really good to have councillors or council officers around you who just have a clear commitment to their, to the people of Brisbane and also to this organisation in delivering. So, and there are many council officers out there who do that and I really have a great deal of respect for those officers and acknowledge that sometimes you work in different, difficult environment. I also need to acknowledge her supervisor, Christopher. I also need to acknowledge her supervisor, Christopher. Chris has also been assisting and working to get things done, and in assisting, one of the more complex areas is constant flooding in my area, and those waterways are a bit of an issue. So Christopher has been helping me with Rockleigh residents in terms of who owns land, what owns—you know, what organisation owns the land, and how do we get a result that clears our creeks and waterways so that we reduce the impact of flooding on residents, and that's particularly with Stable Swamp Creek. So I'd like to thank Christopher as well for doing that, because that issue's been going on for a number of years, so thank you for that. And I'm hoping that won't be cut in next week, or whenever we receive information about the cuts to the budget. Can I just say, there are some—while we have two very effective officers, and they've achieved many results, so I've seen results, and I've met with many managers, so it's good to be able to meet with managers and other people from the organisation. So I've seen lots of improvements in landscaping, in our tree area, in our parks, in our roads, and resurfacing our cleansing areas of council, and I've been really impressed with meeting a number of managers, a number of staff, who are just very keen on delivering. I just need to say that there have been some disappointing areas, and I do want to raise them here, because it's sort of been six, eight, twelve months with some of these issues that we aren't getting results on, so I want to put them on the record as well to try and get results. The first one here, and I walk past it every day, and I don't know how many times I've logged this through. If you're on a wheelchair in a pram or just a walker, this raised section of footpath on Cook Street, it's been looked at, it's been patched up, but I think we should have a way of prioritising really bad areas that don't just need a quick fix. Like this piece in Cook Street, it's been waiting over a year. I think where something is obviously a priority and a problem, we need to be able to get a quick and rapid response, not—so that would be one area that I think—it just flabbergasts me all the time, and when I walk past and residents are saying, "What's council doing? You're a councillor." It's like, well, it's in the system. There's not really—there's not many excuses for that. And I have to say, it has been raised numerous times by myself. And as someone who has several people with disabilities in their life, I just know how difficult that is, how difficult it is for situations and issues like that across the city. Second thing is cleansing. Goodness knows, this has been going on for months and months and months. We do have bus stops that are really—and places outside major shopping centres that are used, they're used by people who are homeless or people who are impacted by mental health issues. They are very unclean. I've raised it so many times, I get sick of raising it. I'm told that it's dealt with, and it was disappointing to go to the ceremony for Mamit Sharma, who was the bus driver that was killed, and there it is, just disgusting. The whole bus stop is covered in—not—I'm not litter, but just covered in spilt drinks and juices, and the whole footpath looks like a mess, and I'm told that it's cleaned weekly in terms of pressure clean, but it isn't. And I think if you're told something is happening, then it needs to happen, and you expect that when you're told something is happening, that the organisation should deliver that. So I just, once again, put this out to the administration and say, I think there's some areas we need to work on a little bit better. Similarly, I've just recently had a request for a seat outside a school. You'd think, no brainer, but I've now been told there's no money to pay for a seat on a footpath outside a school. They agree, PPI agree, that yes, it's needed, yes, it'd be a good thing, but we have no money. Really? We have no money for a council seat on a footpath outside the school entrance? Yeah, I don't know. I would have thought that was 101 basic. So they're the issues that I really am—you know, they're just a few of the issues I'm concerned about. I have gone through the organisation, I have tried to resolve it with management, and I'm bringing it to the chamber now, because when I have brought it to management, I still am not getting results. So they're the sort of things that I would like to see better action on. But to all those officers who are doing a fantastic job, keep doing it, because it's wonderful. I am going to just say also, that's a really—I think it's a really good outcome with the Koala fencing, and I'm glad the administration did do that research, and I'm glad we've got a change on that. It's such a shame that we had to go through that three times, through urgency motions to get action on that, and I think residents are really exasperated by that lack of listening. And I think often what we as opposition bring is not politics, it's actually just decent stuff that we need to address as a council. But I'm glad we've got those results, and I look forward to seeing action as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor—councillor Landers?
Thank you, Chair, and I rise to speak about the Tangeluma Eco-Marines Programme in Brisbane. And last Thursday, I had the great pleasure of attending with some other fellow councillors the annual event called The Wave. It is an end-of-year celebratory event for all the students and the teachers who've been involved in the Tangeluma Eco-Marine School Programme. And I was honoured to collect this sponsor's certificate on behalf of the Lord Mayor, and it was given to thank council for their ongoing support of the Tangeluma Eco-Marines. This year, there were fifty-seven Tangeluma Eco-Marine Schools in Brisbane, both primary and high school, and year on year, the number of schools engaged grow, and the number of primary and secondary students with a deep knowledge and practical application of sustainability also grows. So our students are literally helping us to make Brisbane clean and green. And this year, the Brisbane Eco-Marines Schools took on a range of sustainability projects. And just a few examples, Yoronga State High School introduced new recycling and general waste bins, they raised $300 for a turtle charity, and donated more than seven hundred items of clothing to local shelters. Also, Kenmore State High School removed more than fifty-two kilograms of rubbish from Mogal Creek Catchment, they planted one thousand trees, and they held a fashion swap to reduce textile waste. An Ironside State School planted fifty trees, thanks to council's Free Trees Programme, and they collected batteries and containers for recycling. There are so many inspiring stories coming from the Eco-Marine Schools, including improving their recycling, setting up compost bins and worm farms, and schools who then use the nutrients from the compost material to grow school gardens. Some of them grew food that is used in their tuck shop. And other schools set up native bee hives or planted trees to increase biodiversity and look after the local waterways. Council's support of Eco-Marines also helped them to host educational events for students. Other highlights from the programme this year have included—in early May, the students were lucky enough to take a trip to Moreton Island, Mulgunfen, to have a day of experiences as an Eco-Marine ambassador. And in August, a career expo event for secondary school students was held, and students went to a Waterway Health Day, and the wonderful end-of-year celebratory event, of course, last week. So I want to thank the Tangeluma Eco-Marines Organisation and the hundreds of students and their teachers who are making a real difference to Brisbane's natural environment, all going to make Brisbane a clean, green, and sustainable. As we've mentioned before, the Shrinna Council's aspirations for our future are reflective in the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, where we have attained gold level, and we are the largest carbon-neutral government organisation in Australia. And I know that our chairs across their portfolios continue to work hard to continue this in councillor Murphy's area with the electric buses, the metro, and active travel. Councillor Marks, of course, so many ways, and from recycling, reusing, reducing waste, the Waste Smart Awards, which is coming up this week, and councillor Wines with the recyclable products, glass, and rubber, et cetera, going back into our roads. Councillor Allen with the environmental offset sustainable buildings, et cetera, that are required. In the Kuruilpa plans, of course, encourages those green strategies. And of course, councillor Adams is very focused on the Sustainable Olympic and Paralympic Games in twenty thirty-two. And of course, it goes without saying, of course, that councillor Davis, her portfolio with the environmental offset programme, Bushland acquisition, and there are so many, many more. And I know councillor Howard with a lot of her grants that she has for our different clubs and what have you with solar and encouraging those sort of things as well. So, you know, I just want to say it's fantastic to go along to the Eco-Marines and see another example of how we're making sure we're clean, green, and sustainable, and I'll be handing that over to your councillor Marks. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Landers. Councillor Strunk?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just rise to speak on one item, and that's, of course, on Saturday, we—I think most of us have gone off to a Remembrance Day ceremony, or of course, Armistice Day in North America. And as usual, the subranch—The Forest Lake Subbranch did a terrific job in pulling it all together, and I'd just like to make a couple of people—I just want to acknowledge a couple of people who did a lot of the work. Now, they weren't the only ones, there was a lot of volunteers as well, but Steve and Sharon Ford, who—Steve is the president, Sharon's the secretary, and, you know, and they live out of Jimboomba, so they come a fair distance to do all this work in my ward. I just wanted to thank them very much for all the work they did in pulling it all together. As I said, we had a very special guest that came along, George Church Ward, who turned a hundred, who's been a member of the subranch for a number of years, and even though he now lives out of Briby Island, he still comes across and participates. And anyways, he—as I say, he turns a hundred, but I tell you what, he looks—I mean, he could be eighty, you know, honestly. He's in such good shape. He usually walks unassisted, right, and just an amazing man who did an amazing job for this country, and I just pay tribute to him and all that he's done, and of course, all of those—Pete, all of those serving men and women over the years who sacrificed their lives in many cases, of course, or who just served. And it also is a time that I sort of remember my own father's service. Archie Strunk, who was in the Pacific Theatre in the Navy, and around—the well, one of the interesting actions, of course, around Gualley Canal, if any of you know history, it was quite a theater of war that went on for months and months and months, and luckily enough—well, lucky for me, I suppose, my dad was serving on a destroyer that was sunk, and he—he—only half of the crew actually survived, he was one of them, or I wouldn't be here standing before you tonight. I just—I always think about him and his service. I've been doing some research over the last few years about his service, and it's quite fascinating to keep discovering things about what he got up with between nineteen forty—nineteen forty, when he joined up, and then when he mustered out in nineteen forty-seven. So I just encourage anyone who hasn't done the research to maybe have a look at doing some of that, because it's quite rewarding and fascinating to understand what our forefathers went through during that—during those times. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Strunk. Councillor Dixon, general business?
Mr Chair, I wish to rise in general business to speak about two items, Parents and Bubs Expo and stationery aid. On the Saturday, the twenty-eighth of October, I hosted a Parents and Bubs Expo at Ascot Park. It was a very fun day. We had face painting, a free sausage sizzle, giant games, and a welcome to the ward ceremony to welcome our littlest residents to the Hamilton Ward. There was also a pop-up baby sensory and toddler sensory class for families to enjoy as well. And we all know that caffeine is very important, especially when it comes to small children, so Down Syndrome Queensland operated a coffee cart on the day as well to help them raise some money. I'm so grateful to everyone who came along, either as a visitor to the expo or those who took the opportunity to have a stall. The feedback's been incredible, and I'm so pleased that families were able to connect with organisations such as Kids Safe Queensland, Triple P Parenting, and we even had a collection point for baby give-back, which proved very popular on the day, with many families generously donating items. So we did have a lot of stall holders, too many to list tonight, and throughout the day, we also had a range of speakers who shared their expertise on topics such as the importance of reading to your child, paediatric physio, and some other kid-related areas of interest. I'd also like to thank the library for putting on several very popular storytime sessions. They had a bit of a pop-up library at Ascot Park. It's also National Recycling Week, and I'd like to chat briefly about stationery aid, which is a not-for-profit established in twenty twenty, after the founders, Jan and Ally Shoot, couldn't find a way to sustainably repurpose their two sons' stationery left over from the school year. Not willing just to chuck it in the bin, they instead took the step to create Stationery Aid, which collects unused school supplies and repurposes them into school packs for children who need them. Their motto is "Turn landfill into heartfelt". In fact, since they started Stationery Aid, they've saved the equivalent of a seven-metre-by-four-metre swimming pool from going to landfill of stationery. I'm delighted that my ward office, as well as councillor Howard, is now a collection point, and already it is full at my office. However, as we head towards the end of the school year, I will be putting the call out to Hamilton Ward residents to make sure their excess stationery makes its way to my office, so that many more children in twenty twenty-four are able to start the school year with the supplies to learn. It can truly change the life of a child. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Ooh, I didn't see who popped up first. Councillor Collier, we'll go with you. Sorry, councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I just rise to speak on one item of general business. This week is Perinatal Mental Health Week. Pregnancy and the first year of a baby's life, which is the perinatal period, is simultaneously amazing and challenging, and I know this because I've just gone through it myself with my beautiful daughter Maisie. Too many new mums experience postnatal anxiety, depression, and traumatic birth, and the vast majority of women actually don't reach out for help until they are at breaking point. This year, Perinatal Mental Health Week, the theme is "We're Here, Uncover Your Village", and it does take a village. In the suburbs of Morningside Ward, we have some of the most amazing support networks, and I especially want to mention the work of charity The Nurtured Village, who are local to my ward. The Nurtured Village is a grassroots support organisation that is supporting women in their homes where they need it most. It's a home-cooked meal, it's hands-on, practical support, it's connection, a friend to hold the baby while you have a shower, and true connection to your community. I am extremely proud to have The Nurtured Village, and in particular want to acknowledge founder Emma Gray, without whom none of this amazing work would be possible, and has now expanded right across the country. So if you are silently struggling, I know, reaching out can be really hard, but you're not alone, we are here, we are your village.
Thank you, councillor Collier. Councillor Owen?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I would like to speak tonight on some local achievements, some events and services. Can I firstly start with the Waste Smart Games Awards, and a big shout-out to Polara State School, who I had the privilege to present a $1,500 prize money to yesterday. So they took on the challenge against seventeen Brisbane schools, and can I say that they came out on top? And I'm very, very proud of my students at Polara State School, they have been working extremely hard in this space, from things like going and visiting the landfill to truly understand what's going on, implementing an industrial composter at the school. They—the classes are basically adopting individual bush tucker gardens, and also the amount of acknowledgement that they give to each individual student who participates in Rapper Free Wednesday. And can I say to the council officers that were there yesterday, when they saw all of those faces of the young students displayed on the big screen as part of the assembly, they took away that, "Expect to see this in your local wards right across the city", because they thought that that was a great way of acknowledging the individual efforts right across the school. So a very big congratulations to Polara State School for their continuous efforts in the environment— for their continuous efforts in the environmental space and particularly for waste minimisation. And it's not just the school students, it's also the PNC who are extensively engaged in that as well. I'd also just like to reflect on one of my local events which have, has been held recently. The first is Halloween in the Park and the other is Remembrance Day. And I would like to just say through you, Mister Chair, to the Lord Mayor, thank you for continuing the funding for Halloween in the Park. It is a great fun outing for many residents in my community. And the outfits that people come in, the costumes, it is just fantastic that people truly get into the spirit. To all of the community supporters who band together to make this a great day for the kids, thank you for all of your efforts. In particular, Remembrance Day, it is a very sombre, respectful occasion. And I would specifically like to acknowledge the school captains of Alchester State School for their participation in the recent Remembrance Day service. They showed to many that the younger generation is ready to step up and continue the legacy of showing that respect, showing the dignity that is deserved to our veterans and our servicemen and women who continue to serve, but also specifically to those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. It's wonderful to have many of our local community groups. We have volunteers who come and sing the national anthem, play the bugle, play the bagpipes. 2549 came and did the catapult party. And to Flight Lieutenant Sam Burchill of Sixth Squadron Ambulance, Ambly, thank you for our flypast. It was the only one in the city of Brisbane and it was absolutely well received. And it was given the due dignity that it deserves of what that flypast does reflect. I'd also just like to take a moment to, whilst we're talking about Remembrance Day, pay my congratulations to George Church Ward. George is a wonderful gentleman who I have known for 16 years. And he was the person who coordinated with me the memorial and the upgrade of the memorial and the amphitheatre at Forest Lake for the 100th anniversary of Gallipoli. And he is a wonderful, wonderful man. And when I was having a chat to him to personally acknowledge his 100th birthday, he was just his usual self. And I do concur with councillor Strunk that to look at him, you wouldn't realise that he is the age he is. He is very sprightly, he is very with it. And he is a great testament to what living a good life is all about. And, you know, from me as well, certainly happy 100th birthday, George. You're a great part of the community and you continue to be part of it, even though you've now moved into a retirement community. I do also want to acknowledge the service that was held in Maruka and echo the sentiments of many that the loss of our bus driver, Manmeet Alicia, is still felt throughout our bus drivers. And to all of Manmeet's colleagues and friends, and particularly his family, who came here from India, once again, my heart is always with you. I will continue to support you as best I can. And whether that is just being there for these services and to connect with you when you need that support, that is something that I'm prepared to continue to do. It is certainly a tragedy that has rocked many right across our council organisation. And it still continues to be that reminder every day for so many of our bus drivers. So I think it is wonderful that we have been able to honour Manmeet's legacy with Manmeet's Paradise at Maruka. And I just do thank everyone for showing Manmeet's brother Amit and his sister that due respect and dignity by turning up for that service on that day. And certainly, it is going to be something that will be remembered for many years to come right across our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Owen. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on three items tonight. Firstly, to talk about Meianjin Reggae Festival, which is happening this weekend at Musgrave Park. It's a grassroots, family-friendly event with at least three sound systems that will be going through the history of reggae, food trucks, workshops and pop-ups, plus much more. If you haven't checked it out, you really should. It's a really wonderful, free community event. It usually gets thousands of people there dancing in Musgrave Park. There are no fences, there's no charge. It's a really wonderful event. Shout out to Chris and Marco and the team at Champion Sound. Secondly, I rise to speak about homelessness and rough sleeping, which is obviously, of course, increasing across our city. I think we can all acknowledge this is not only through the research that we're receiving recently, but also quite visibly across our wards. I want to begin by thanking PSLO officers for the work that they're doing, particularly at Musgrave Park and at Karilpa Park Point. I know it is a difficult job. Just being down there earlier today, there was a count of 27 tents, which is an increase from last week. So it is an issue that is constantly increasing. I also want to thank grassroots organisations like Community Friends, Feeding 4101 and Community Union Defence League. Between these grassroots organisations that don't have any funding from anyone, they feed now and distribute emergency food supply to about 600 people. And not just from the ward, and this is not just to rough sleepers, but this is also to various people and households that are under food insecurity, rental stress, housing stress. And so the work that they see often goes unnoticed. But I want to give a really quick and heartfelt shout out to them for the work that they are doing in community. And lastly, I speak, because last week, late last week, I received a message from a group of grade fivers, a grade five class who had made a sign and had made and signed a poster asking for a ceasefire in Palestine. They asked me to deliver it to Brisbane City Council and deliver the message. I think it is incredible that a group of children can speak so proudly and openly to this, as very few people in this chamber speak about it at all and call for ceasefire. There will be another protest this weekend, the 19th of November in King George Square. Last week, we had over 5,000 people at the protest and the numbers grow every week. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any further items of general business? No one rising to their feet, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you, councillors.